Go all over. And so we have two new stone wall openings. As I'll just point out what I mentioned before. Then we have three live trees that we'd like to remove as part of this. And then two dead trees. This is actually behind the stone wall, so inside. So I wanted to show you that was one of the trees we were removing. I did this is Etch A Sketch steel. It's not exactly right, but it's. So you can't turn this upside down and shape it or anything. So here's an aerial photo showing the areas we're talking about. The new sidewalk here is paved. And I should introduce Bridget Myers and Steve Tyler, who will jump in anytime I go astray or to answer the really serious questions that you have. But they're with Howard Stone Hudson?
Yeah.
And the engineering and design firm that we have working on this. And you'll see what we have is we're actually relocating as part of this work, the crosswalk that connects parking to the trails on what is the east side of Ash Street and into the walkway around the reservoir. We're connecting to a small portion of existing sidewalk that goes over the bridge there and then continuing that sidewalk. Just to orient you, the parking, and you can't see the trees, but the parking on this side is about here and here under the trees. And we picked this crossing point because there's a significant, what is it, a prime there?
There's a prime, yes.
Which we're north of. So we picked it so that it would make sense with what else is happening there. So you're not going to be walking across people pulling in and out to park, but you're also going to just miss a really big pine tree. And then we move along all within the right of way. If we look to the just kind of west, northwest of the sidewalk, it's all MWRA land, all fully wooded. But we really can't, it would be a struggle trying to get easement from the MWRA to do this work.
Where does the walkway change from paved to crushed stone?
Okay, so what we, and we worked this out. We've gone to the, before you, we first went to the board of selectmen to make sure they approve the use of the funds and what their view of what the material should be. We also went to the rep department and also traffic and sidewalk who are supporting this. And they all said, why don't we let CONCON decide as they have to maintain it? But there was also expressed informally a preference. The sidewalk was going to be in asphalt. It was felt that because of the slopes on the legacy trail, they should be asphalt and because it would be useful more often. And it comes right out of the Council on Aging and Community Center building, so there made sense there. But crossing the case of states, we felt that a crushed stone was a more appropriate, or crushed, and stone dust, stone and stone dust was a more appropriate.
So the changeover is right at the stone wall?
And there'll be, that will be probably a minor maintenance issue right there because when you change materials, you always have a little bit of a problem. So we'll come down, the sidewalk will come down. Try to avoid the utility poles. Try to keep a couple really major trees. And even here, we cut in where there's another huge pine tree right here. So we're trying to figure out how to minimize the loss of trees. At the same time, our desire is to have a maintainable sidewalk and a reasonable one within the right of way that we control.
Michael, have you worked with an arborist to determine what other trees might be a risk if you're not taking them from the construction activity for the sidewalk?
We have not, my knowledge, but Steve?
No, not as of yet. And actually, it was glad we knew that this was picked up because the arborist that's been doing a townwide tree assessment on tree inventory, they missed this section. So they need to go back and do this. We're pushing for that to be announced later.
We had that issue on Marion Street sidewalk, but we did a little bit of bombing and leaving. And we saved a large number of trees. And we used a lot of risk of trees as well.
Right, we don't have a lot of room on this. And we also don't have a lot of trees here. But we do have some that we think makes sense to take down. By the way, there's, if you go down here, you'll know that there used to be problems with a pond of water here. And so as part of the work that we did after our purchase, we created a swale here that collects that surface water and then trains it down just, I'm going to call this northwest, mainly west of the sidewalk and down into the wetland area. So the sidewalk is in this little area between a gen, very gentle, here it gets very, very gentle. Here it's enough so that we have to have a crossing of it. And essentially it will be culvert.
Culvert, yeah, parallel pipes.
Two parallel pipes. So we'll have that crossing here. So here's what we've done. I've shown you the plan now, so you saw it in general in the aerials. And here's the plan that shows the trees that we will be removing and where specifically on that plan they are. Again, to orient you, this is the reservoir on the bridge. The parking starts about here. The new sidewalk, as you can see, is much darker. Here's our crossing. We have two double trees, double, two, I call them double trees, but they're probably two trees that grew up adjacent to each other and are often, are weaker generally because of that, the root structure. And they are on the, they make it hard for us to live within, to create the sidewalk, live within the existing street and within the setback to the MWRA. So those are two, a major one is here, so we've avoided that. But this one we'd like to go and then this one is, even in the winter, you can see that it's dead.
That doesn't, but that one doesn't look like it's even in the right of way. Maybe that's just.
Oh, it is, maybe it's my arrow is going to run up down. It needs to be removed in order to get to sidewalk.
How wide is the sidewalk?
It's a five-foot sidewalk.
How deep do you go in construction?
Yeah, we go down at least six inches, or wait, I'm sorry. We go down probably nine inches, six inches of gravel and then three inches of a compacted stone dust on top. Or here, it would be three inches of hot asphalt mix on top. And if you, if you're not into solid material, you sometimes have to go a little bit deeper than that. But the general spec is six inches of compacted gravel and then three inches of asphalt on top of that too, for the sidewalk itself.
Originally, you were talking about five trees, but.
Yeah, so these are three.
Three, okay.
In this, so there were, there were sections of the plan that I was showing you. So this is the middle section of the plan. And we have another tree that to be removed. And Steve will tell you that we really can't, because of its location, we can't fit, we have to be able to fit 52 inches for the, if we're ever going to plow it, between the tree and the, and our right of way. This one is really in a place that we can't figure out one side or the other. We can't go on one side or the other. We don't want to go into the existing street. And so this one is a fairly reasonably healthy tree, but we'd like to remove it. I just would remind you that all behind this is all protected wooded area. And the last one is, this is a new opening. The last one is just.
That was outside the right of way, so that was one of the changes from our application. There's four in the application within the right of way. This just happens to be a fifth tree.
All right, so there are only four in the application. Let me show you, this one is not only dead, but it's covered with some invasive. But here's where we would cut through, probably a little bit wider than the five-foot sidewalk, six feet maybe there?
Well, what we, what we asked for in the application was, we said it was 10 to 12 feet when we did the field walk. We thought, well, some of the decisions on whether or not a sidewalk, the plow, even to get in there.
Oh, because it's coming at an angle, it's got to be larger. So you can see from the inside, this is not a, this is just a wall formed by dropping stones there and not the wall that's, this is across the street. You see the very nice wall. But our wall is just probably a couple stones, large stones, high, one, a couple on the ground and a couple of those.
There's almost a break-in right now. That's a quick picture of it on the lower left, right?
Yeah, we, yeah, this is the big tree and so this is.
One is looking from the street, one is looking.
This is from the street and this is looking from the inside.
So it's kind of almost like a void area and like a low rural area in that particular spot.
Is that snow or is that a water reflection?
Oh, that's, that's water reflection.
Okay, so this is what you're talking about, the swale, about to divert water away or?
Yeah, this was, let's see. I think Emily took this picture a time after a big rain and just noted that inside, and it's on the other side of that swale, this is where the water is being directed down to. And it just dissipates in an existing.
So it's being, it's being, all the water is being directed down to that sort of wet spot over there?
Yeah, that you can sort of see a little bit down here and that the area between the stone wall and the edge of the swale is this section here.
So is your path, that's why you've got the culvert? Is your path is going to have to?
It's crossing it only in this one point further up.
All the way down the wall, that's kind of the high side. And so the water really probably, that low spot, that wet spot is probably, it's at least 20 feet from the wall. It might not look in that photo just because the distance is away from you. When you go next to a wall, it's higher. So up next to the wall is here and then it kind of grays the way down as you get farther.
So I guess I'm just not clear as to where our stone dust path is going to.
Oh, great, just parallel to the wall, so looking at the.
Okay, so it's not like we've got any path going through and it constantly be much, never mind.
See, so here's where we just are coming in. We just showed you that. And this really stays right along, the stone wall is almost on this red line. And the swale begins a couple feet, the other side of it, the top of the swale, and then it gentle down. So we come right along there and then cross over because this, it's collecting the water that's coming down off this slope and used to come out about here into the street, especially in the winter. And so it's now collecting. So now this is sort of the deepest part of the soil or the steepest part of the soil size and it's for crossing. So that'll all be stone dust. Then we come up, this is actually, one of the things the selectmen asked, we're, gosh, if we're going to redevelop this parcel, which is parcel nine, what's going to happen with this? And what we said is, well, that doesn't seem imminent. This is a great connecting trail. And however, it was always thought that however this was redeveloped, some, the redevelopment would include a way to connect the two ends. So the path might not follow that line in the future because that line is determined really by the logical line on the terrain. And frankly, if you looked at a drawing that we had a master plan done and you looked at the land itself, it really is the logical spot.
So lot nine is still municipal land?
Lot nine remains municipal land. The CONCON has voted unanimously to seek it to be turned into conservation land. But it remains municipal land and with no intention to develop it yet, but not, nor any intention to dedicate this construction. But it extends from sort of approximately this point, which is a corner of this property, to approximately this point. So is it dividing? And so the last is, so this just shows how that goes and shows the topo lines. And then up at Wellesley Street, we have the other crossing. And there's where we're all sorry that we have to cross and then deal with Hen's Tooth Wall. But, but we do. It will not only, it's a logical place because it's across from what was an existing, I went back. There's actually an existing driveway opening here. And it will, that, and there are two openings in the stone wall on this side, existing, and they provide access to the servicing of this. But directly across is a logical place to cross for a number of reasons. I wish this, this doesn't, where Elia does. See this line here? That's the AUL line. And we're trying to keep inside the AUL line, but we also didn't want to get out into the field. So we have to, among our budget costs are dealing with moving soil in an AUL area, which this is a protocol. And we have money for our legislative professional, the storage of soil, protection during it. But this is logical for a number of reasons. And one is that we can stay on the edge of the viewscape. We can be opposite existing driveway. We are only one hen's tooth high. There was a beautiful stone there. And we can stay along the tree line so that the trail as stone dust and close to the tree line allows the access, but doesn't disrupt the intention of the use. So sort of, I think that's my final one. Yeah, this is the tough one, but.
How wide an opening in the Hen's Tooth wall?
Can you tell which stones are gone from when to?
I cannot, but I think it's 18 feet and so.
Well, I don't understand.
Yeah, so I would guess we're going from about here to about here. Did you say that right, Steve?
Yeah.
Eighteen feet because.
That's too wide, Michael.
That's too wide?
Yeah, that's, the, what you're showing is too wide. It's about seven stones across.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Maybe eight?
Yeah.
So maybe there.
How long is the wall? How long is the wall itself? Does it continue up?
Oh, yeah, the wall continues all the way from, well, it's broken up. It's sort of an alphabet lane. There's some portions of wall and then it goes all the way up to the opening, to the access to the existing buildings. And then it goes further up than that, so.
So 18 feet is acceptable to the fire department?
Well, we, I sort of, you can't read it, but that's what the letter from the chief is.
Okay.
Just have requested an 18 foot.
Yeah. Okay.
I think it's excessive. For, can you have truck into?
I mean, usually we hear it's because we've got giant, you know, huge tractor trailers going up there. Is this for fire that we're talking about?
I know, I thought the same thing. That I would, I would assume that what we're looking at is the unlikely event that someone gets hurt and they have a rescue truck. What she saw was, said, no, this is what we want. We want to get any equipment up that we.
A ladder truck.
That's the usual standard.
Yeah. That's nice. We love to retract the trailer.
We're fighting the same battle of the parking and the Josephus. You know, where the foot operating.
On the street, we thinking that 12 would be sufficient for, well, right now it's Jim Anzer who does the mowing on a contract with CONCON. But probably 12 feet would be sufficient for the, the equipment for the mowing and that other equipment, but.
This is an emergency.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Steve?
Yeah, I haven't thought about it much till now, but I'm sort of imagining that, yeah, 18 feet would be a lot if you were coming perpendicular. But as far as a truck's got to make that turn.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe that's the reason?
It is the reason, so you can make a turn.
Turning where is, which truck though? The turning where is for the?
Well, they might, they might be saying, look, we're coming up here so we don't have a big swing in and we got to go.
Does that mean that you just can't take that turn 60 miles an hour? No, it's not going to slow down.
You can't make the turn.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we have, we've seen many houses where you had to make an opening in the stone wall to get into the driveway. And it's the same exact situation where the fire truck would have to pull it in. And we've never had, asked, we've never asked to make it 18 feet. It's just really excessive.
I mean, I think we'd be amenable to, if, if chief Sore was okay with it, you know, to get it down to the consistent, it's 12 or 14, but this.
Which on the other side, it's just a trail.
Yeah, I, I.
What is the opening of the?
18.
It's an existing opening that's probably about 16 feet.
Well, check is 18 feet between a pipe follower. I think the open itself is wider.
Oh, is it?
Where it is at the curve line, yeah.
Yeah, there's a, and there's a, not really the same definition of a, of a stone wall. There is stone wall on here, but it's not nearly as defined as this. I should also point the other.
Swing, right, on the other side. So instead of 18 feet, we have 14, you know, worry about just swinging the road. Got to learn to throw a stone the other side.
Well, you know, really, because you have the curb there, so.
It's a curb.
Yeah. Is there a curb on that?
You have the trail.
We would build down, it would be a ramp.
You have the trail, yeah.
It would be a handicap accessible.
The curb would be removed.
Oh, wait, no question. And I should also add that, I'll show you not surprised later, what we've got to do is have some way in which we have some, some sort of, what is it, fencing, oh, what should I?
Just a gate system.
A gate system, yeah. So we're, we're looking at bollards with a semicircular steel coming out so that they can swing out rather than a chain across it.
I can bring up a picture.
What's the gate for?
So that people don't drive in and do donuts in the field.
So it's, what's the gate made of?
Steel, painted steel.
It's sort of, sort of highway design.
Yeah.
Doesn't really go with the check.
It's a trail style gate. What's, the type of gate that's there now is to this, on the opposite side of road, to pipe follower with the chain across.
Yeah, I'm not sure we're going to be able to say that was done with any particular intention.
No, I, 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 I agree. But you also need to have an opening, making a lot of pedestrians who want to park it.
Yeah.
And then being able to get.
So can I ask a question? So when we go up this gate, the emergency is happening. Somebody's passed out on the trail. Up comes the fire truck. They can't just swing in anyway. They're going to have to slow down. Someone's going to have to get out, open the gate, during which time maybe they can do their three-point maneuver and get in. I mean, if we're talking about times in the essence, you've got a gate have to open. So I would think that those two minutes or moments could be spent realigning trucks if they could get into a.
Is it 18-foot wide gate?
No, no, it has five feet, we want a five-foot path in the middle. So each arm, I guess, would be six and a half foot arm.
Is there a picture of what that would look like?
We do have a picture.
I do have a picture.
You have to.
Yeah.
Want to go through it now? Want to go up and do it?
Yeah.
I can set it. The, on the bottom is the trail. Can you stretch it where I can see the full name? It's one of those two trails.
I think it's this one. Down, so go down, second from the bottom.
It's the larger of the two files, yeah.
This one?
Yep. I'm going to scroll through the pages. I think we have to, no, some. No, we don't have enough on the boards.
Signage is going to, are these examples from some of the signage that's still hanging up?
No, we haven't picked.
No, signage hasn't been picked.
Okay. But signage is looking at over by the community center.
Actually, if you, open that again if you could. It's lower, there's a gate there.
Protecting.
Not bad, it's good.
Well, it's less modern than what we've been described. I can, I have a picture.
It'd be a tough one if you had to walk through that gate.
You want to see that?
Oh, yeah.
She's just saying it's not, that's not exactly.
Not that exact.
Is it five?
You could still have it.
Always open, right? Five feet, always open and then these.
You could still have it, yeah.
Yeah. Your gate, so you guys can pick any kind of gate as well.
Yeah, I, I mean, I. Yeah, I should also add that we want to be able to pull in a little bit and so the gates is back from the wall. And we also have a little bit of a slope to deal with from the street level down to the grade in the, so we haven't worked out all the details. Could be one of the, see what the width was and whether we're going to change those stones and put them on the side a little bit, but.
Do you have a picture of the gate?
We try, well, we did, Bridget has it on the phone.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah.
My, came through my channel. So this, it's coming.
You could still have, you know, could still have something that goes down and you'd be around to hold it. You don't have to touch it.
With a hand, doesn't it go right, point to the gates?
Yeah, or you can, yeah.
Yeah, maybe.
Oh, I see it's offset.
Offset trail.
It'd also work, the gate, you should double mine.
Except that then if you have to, if it's a broken gate with two bollards, I mean, is that, at that point, we then have to have it be.
Does it have to be wide enough?
14 feet from there, I mean, it's like, it's kind of strange. You probably have to think more thought.
I think we are messed up having the trail in the middle between how many of those arms come out from whatever the design is.
It's possible, but it just doesn't all work for you to the afterthought.
It does, it does.
How about the Hertz, Rento Car protect?
There.
Papa, somebody was in.
Country retired.
Yeah, country retired when he was coming in. Oh, wow.
So in the, in the photo there is, that's, that's black, I believe. And there are the different colors, which is from, from those, they, CONCON picked it green. What we suggest would be green and one of the browns.
Well, hmm.
Maybe it fits in that front.
Sure, yeah, I guess. Dust reel and open. Big giant lights on pathways.
There's a pin and then it ends up getting, then it ends up locked in.
You need to unlock it.
The, you know, we can be as dismal behind the Hen's Tooth wall. You know, there'd just be parts of it you would see. Bollards would be behind it then.
No, we'd be in the openings. We wouldn't see it in the opening. We wouldn't see it the whole way driving by.
You could touch it, one, someone behind too. You could collect it, put the bollards behind the.
You wouldn't.
Why would you make an opening that then obstruct with the gate? I think we plan on putting the gate right behind all of those stones, the bollard.
But you still see those.
Oh, oh, you still see them.
So post is all uncovered. The vertical post is all uncovered.
There's not a lot of reason to free that up.
Okay.
Well, our, our interest would be to reduce the opening, but, and we'll make an appeal to the chief, but I don't think we can override chief Sore in terms of that opening unless you have evidence that it's unnecessary and that it's inconsistent with previous approvals.
It is inconsistent with the.
It's, but the residential would say it's consistent with the residential.
But this is not access to a residential building. Maybe he didn't understand that. Maybe, I mean, maybe that would be helpful to say, this is more or less a residential, or this is going to be open space and there can't be buildings on it.
Right, and so it's not, it's completely municipal.
There can't be buildings.
Well, you can't, it's, once, once you put it in as open space under CPA, you can't.
It's like an ambulance.
Yeah, I think you could do some gazebo's or some other things, but you can't. Yeah, I think you could do some gazebo's or some other things, but you can't.
You don't need a ladder truck.
That's a cat's paw in a tree.
Well, that does make that. Well, this is a.
I, I think we need to, but my feeling is, this is the rock, the place where things get a little dicey, everything else for me looks fine.
Well, we also wanna talk about some of the trees, 'cause when we went on the sidewalk, a couple of trees that didn't appear, they needed to be removed, or things could be shifted along.
Oh, okay.
Um, so I think we wanna talk about those. Kim was there, Lussa was there, I was there. You might take notes.
Okay. All right, so maybe go back and look at the trees? Yeah, you wanna go back to your.
I think there were two that we thought didn't need to be removed, right?
Did you take pictures?
I did.
Were those notes that you?
Yeah.
One to the beginning, like, behind the wall. That was one. One in the middle. One in the middle, up there, mine, crosswalk here.
Right, that was one of them.
That was one, yeah.
It's huge.
So that would require shifting the crosswalk into moral outlines of the middle of the driveway and the parking area.
Or, or putting it at an angle, it would start before that tree rather than after, when we talked about maybe it could go at an angle.
Which tree, which are the best?
The tree in the middle.
The tree in the middle.
Which is a big white pine.
And, and it could go at angle, the crosswalk maybe. So you just, still keep it on the side.
Two trees together, so it's both trees.
Well, yeah, they've grown to be, it's literally like they're one, but they are two, and that. They tend to be more vulnerable in storms because of the way their root system goes.
Do you have another photograph of that tree?
I do.
But, so unlike the pines that we tend to see in Weston that are like skinny and have stuff up top, this one actually has some.
Huge.
It's got, yeah.
And that other one, big one, is that an oak?
There's another one that we thought, sidewalk, let's see, over the alley. There.
This one?
Yes, yes.
That's it now?
Yeah.
That's the one you can saw with the handle?
That's the, that's the, the double one that you were talking about, kind of shifting a few things.
Yes.
Was it the double one, or?
Yes.
'Cause I really do think that the trees that really overhang our roadways are, they brought the temperatures from the use of some of those vehicles, aren't come walking. It's our shade trees on the, the street, I mean, it's one thing to say, there's lots of forests behind it, but it's traffic calm, it's a lot of things. It's pretty chewy.
There, there is a way, you think there's a way to work around it, Steve, is that?
We thought there was.
Who wants to deal with this?
Uh, Steve, what about an angled crossing? I mean, it's not, it's not a deal.
You try to keep pedestrians, you know, the shortest pathway across, ninety degrees to the road typically. Not to say there aren't diagonal crosswalks, in fact, fifty feet from this one is an existing diagonal crosswalk, which would be, which would go away because we don't have any two fifty feet each.
And I don't see people speeding a lot too, that particular area, because that is the NDC dog park, as we all know, and, uh.
Oh, no, they've got, they've got a lot of complaints about.
Really?
And you see so many people dogs there.
It's a forty mile per hour speed limit, it's crazy, it shouldn't be that, but it is.
And that's under our jurisdiction, right?
No.
What, is that a state road?
Well, we can't change it without demonstration of risk.
Yeah, speed limits, the regulatory speed limits in any town have to go through a process where you do a speed study, and you measure the speed of actual vehicles and your emissions. And the state, the docs are willing to adopt eighty-fifth percentile on speed, so.
Yeah.
The assumption is that eighty-five percent of the, of the drivers are driving at the same speed. So oftentimes, we're, we have, it's, you think that, in that stretch, that we'd like to reduce the speed limit, but the study, results of the study might show that eighty-fifth percentile on speed is actually forty-five miles per hour. So it goes the wrong way, and sometimes you don't really wanna ask the question.
You have to come back to like you.
Unfortunately, there, you've had people who are headed north, coming off a windy section of Ash Street, and they see a dead straight. And they just.
You also have the downhill leading into it, so.
And then downhill.
People.
I don't think we have a huge increase, and you have great sightlines, yeah.
You just straighten it.
Yeah, yeah, so you have good sightlines.
How angled was it have to be, I mean, is it, is it a huge angle or is it a slight angle? I mean, how many extra feet are we talking about?
Steve, your proposal is to. Will you give us the other tree if we give you this one?
We have a little.
You're, you're suggesting that we replace one angled sidewalk with another angled sidewalk, right?
Yeah, is that one, is that, you know, is that there?
Yeah, that looks.
We, I think. Yeah, that's pretty angled.
We're definitely giving you the dead one.
So we're thinking of laying off all count that on employees until this is resolved.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
So.
That iconic.
Hey! So there, so, okay, here's where they're starting, here's the tree, so you.
It'd be more of an angle.
Thirty, forty-five?
It's not really, it's not quite.
It's probably more forty-five, I would say.
Yes, it's a steeper angle than the left angle.
I mean, the other option is that you cross before that parking area, but then you're walking behind those cars.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you just lengthen the sidewalk on the, on that side, just make the sidewalk longer? You mean the one in the parking lot side?
That's the, that's the parking lot right there, right? Can you show where the parking lot is?
Where's the parking lot? I, I don't, it doesn't have like a clear definition, it's a gravel lot, so there's no striping that shows the beginning or ending, um. So.
You remember?
Pull off begins about where the crossing is.
Right there.
And you can see the, you can see the fence line in here, in the corner of the fence line, so the millings in the pull-off really is where the crosswalk is now. But there's another thing to add about the sidewalk on that side, it was, um, picked up through our review last week. So there's a crosswalk, as you see already, to the left on that drawing. Um, one of the things in our scope is, is to, after we get the cor, sidewalk on that side of the street, we also need to make a connection where that crosswalk goes.
Yeah, one is just going, going nowhere.
Correct, so either way, we gotta go through that tree, whether it's on, from one side or the other. We've gotta get, the kind of sidewalk needs to be continuous from wherever it is on the right side of the page, all the way back to that former crosswalk.
No, it doesn't, why do you have to go there?
Unless you can tell us not to, that, that's what our scope says to do, and there's a trail and stuff.
Yeah, but, but that's also, that's an unpaved trail.
Yeah.
So why do we have to have a paved sidewalk to an unpaved trail?
Well, I'm not saying it needs to be paved, but if we're, if you wanted to remove that from our scope, we certainly have no problem with that.
I don't know, what do you?
But it is in our written scope, to make the, make the connection to what that.
Crosswalk there is.
You're talking about this one today.
Little angled one.
That's the one, there's another parking lot over there.
No, 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 the parking lot is on the other side of the reservoir of the bridge, there's not.
That's what I'm saying, on the left-hand side, right?
No, no, but we're looking down here.
And then there's this little parking lot up here, there's these two little.
So there's a little walkway that goes, and you sort of can go under the trees that are planted along the.
Right.
The reservoir, but it's not paved, it's a.
Right. I'm not sure what he's saying, what are you saying? I'm saying that right now, people cross that crosswalk and go off into the trail, I just wanna.
Smaller angle.
The one that already exists, that one.
Okay, that one, okay.
And they go off either above that way.
And so what are you saying, that suddenly we would need to have a sidewalk over?
Well.
On the other side, when they cross?
We were reminded last week that our scope includes making a connection to what that connects to, and so.
But that that is.
We're in a constant battle where left hand is saying, go right, right hand's saying, go left, we just need to know which way to go. Um, so, right now, if you cross the street right there, it's basically a mud hole from where that new crossing is to the old crossing. And so, that connection wouldn't necessarily need to be paved, it could be paved, it could be millings, it could be something, but probably should be something different than what the, where the mud gets there right now. Um, and that would include the ability to get on the other side of that tree. So whether or not you wanted to save the tree, and tell people they gotta walk, walk around the tree and do other things. Um, we're certainly willing to do what your final decisions are, and if we see it as a safety issue, or something where we're having great concern with, then we'll point it out at that point in time. Um, certainly we have concern if you're gonna say you're gonna build a sidewalk, you wanna make people walk out the road rather than, um, so I would certainly bring that to the essence of our safety, we have to see.
So you're saying the tree could remain and people would just, the people who were going for a walk in the woods would just have to realize that they would have to walk around the tree, right?
Well, I understand, why can't you just leave this and the people have to do this? If they're going that way.
Two crosswalks?
Yeah, you don't.
Yeah, the crosswalk, that's a pretty close crosswalk.
Well.
Maybe you didn't need that tree.
What is the, what other tree, the, what's the other tree that's in question?
The other trees aren't listed on that.
No.
So what's the other tree?
Oak.
It's an oak. This one.
And so where is it? Uh, it is on the plan, just up to, that's, we look at the twenty-four inch over here, so. Here's the, here's the match line, it's pointing up a bit, um, heading north of it, that's the twenty-four inch over on that side.
So we, we thought that the sidewalk should just get a little narrow over there, wasn't there one near right where it could cut through the wall?
Yeah.
Well, that, but that's the one that's not, that one's not on the, to the right.
There was one that Lussa was talking about for a long time. She was special.
Oh, she, what she was talking about there, that one is going to stay, but it's the work around that tree that she's concerned about.
So what's gonna, so, so this? Well, we, we're proud here, but we're.
What's your feeling about this one, Kim?
It's a great tree, but I didn't see a solution to it. And it, there's really not space on the other side. And it's, it's probably a better tree than the pines and the grates, because it's harder.
But we talked about, in some situations, making the sidewalk narrow, like four feet or.
But this time it's right in the middle of the.
We talked about that all the time.
Right.
I don't see why we can't just follow the narrow one.
Right. Because it's right in the middle.
It's not four feet.
So there's not.
There's not four feet on either side.
Yeah, there is, 'cause, 'cause right now, there's, there's, when we looked at it, it looked like it was almost five feet, sort of, if you made it four, there would be a. No, no one had a tape measure or anything, but we thought, did we think that it could be indecent?
I think you'd have to pay it right up to the, to the trunk, in order to, I mean, I kinda paced it off, and I think, I mean, the air, margin of error might have been like, how much? Would be kind of.
Yeah, I thought you can, I thought you paced to the trunk, plus it, it drops down a little bit, so it goes to a hole a little bit. Steve, if you have to go right up into the pavement and then get down, twelve inches, so you're cutting right into the.
So maybe what somebody was suggesting earlier is that, you know, if you live on the oak and try to do our best to save the pine tree. And then people just have to, to figure, I, I don't know how important it is to have a, you know, it's a little like the, the crosswalks on County House Road. The Town Center Planning Committee was showing, well, you have an elaborate access to something that's just not really there.
I mean, that's a sidewalk, and you can build a side, you're gonna wrap the sidewalk around it, and you gotta be very sensitive to the ridge structure.
Yeah, this, I don't think this.
Might be asking too much for this.
Doesn't look like it's good. Well, in case we're there, they're planting the tree at the time they put the sidewalk in, it's not, they're not, you know, they're creating a tree pocket. Right. And not.
They'll put new sidewalks, they do put new sidewalks.
They sort of custom shape the tree roads.
It's not only the sidewalk.
Different, there's different material around the tree, doesn't.
But the, there's not much sidewalk left, it looks like, it's a, you know, I said, it's the two trees, by the time you're finished, you know, you've got, what, eighteen inches to try to swing around it?
But you're, you're due that, what, eighteen inches, it's not, maybe it's nothing like the church tree, or it's just too big, I'm sure you'd have at least three fingers, if not more. Unfortunately, no, I'm gonna tell you this.
So where are we? Um, is the sense of the, of the planning board that we prefer to see a, a diagonal crosswalk there and save that tree and then, uh, let it, you know, forget about the, the.
Well, we could also just have gravel in there, couldn't we, Steve? And, and Bridget, could we allow for a connection to over here, if it's wet now, or wanna maintain that, just, just put some gravel in there?
What I would say is if we're putting in gravel, we're hardening up the edges of the road around the sidewalk.
Yeah, but, but this is not, but it's not connecting to a sidewalk.
And then the trails are.
And then if they get there, they're off the sidewalk anyway.
I, I'm not saying you can't do that, I'm just saying that that's what, what we, what we'd be, that Steve's proposal is on the right side.
No, no, but, but we're still, what we're trying to do is say, how do we get across here, and how do we still have a way for someone to go and, and connect to this tree?
You don't do that that much, I'm not sure.
Well, so what Michael was suggesting is just make it a less formal thing.
Yeah, that's right.
Right.
That side of the reservoir, if you wanna walk.
Yeah, so that, that exists to me, and then you say, no, to the, you know, you say, okay, we'll let the, that oak tree go, and that looks like it really is a problem. And, um, and, and then, we could stipulate what we think is a reasonable opening in the, in the, this is so long, we have, how far back this will be, so. Um, and I would say, you know, with sixteen feet beyond the, or I would say, um, that's more what we see in residential applications.
Well, do fourteen?
Well, that's a little bit of the stuff of the driveway.
The problem is, I mean, it's big breaking that, quite unusual law, and, and then to get the, to, I mean, I'm not really sure what the gates have been on, it's, it's all gonna work, and it just seems a little bit bigger as a start point, is we take out all this, and then we kind of figure out what we're gonna do. Starting with that.
What do you think, so we? We do have to get through.
They have to get through, but the question is which vehicles have to go through it? And, and how quickly, if they have to go through it, which fact that you have to get out of whatever it is, which may, I think that would be, since there are not gonna be buildings up here, we're not gonna take the ladder trucks up there, unless of course it's dancing tree. But it's not that you're gonna swing in and go straight again.
You have to get out.
You're, you're.
Why, okay, yeah.
Can I throw the idea that lights one, I don't think anyone's ever liked it, I feel like I got you.
I don't mind it.
So, so that's, that's across the way, right? And I, the issue on this new side of the new opening is trying to fit in the vehicle gate and getting the bed upstream through, you kind of end up with something that's really kind of happening, everything, right? What about sixteen foot wide openings, farmer's swing gate across, it looks like it's country roads that look just like, you know, like any entrance to like a farm road that you drive to like Lincoln.
Yeah.
And then offset to that would be a smaller opening for pedestrians, just a sneak through, and then they come together. You know, that, that one would be four feet wide.
Right, and what if I'm just waiting for, well, there's gonna have.
I'm not quite that, though.
Yeah, but, but it has to be, it can't just be.
Legal structure.
Well, whatever, whatever it is, the pedestrian, but you, you know, you.
But then you are having the total. But then you are having the total amount of opening using greater...
Right, but you're big open.
And we got like twenty feet.
You're big open, it looks like the edges to a barn, right? You could have, you could have a wooden swing post.
Right, right.
You know, rail gate.
Aesthetically.
You know, and, and people are gonna drive by and say, that's where the horse trail holds it, right? And then ten feet away is where, you know, people walk through, or eight feet or whatever. I think where you're trying to have the opening, put people through the middle of the opening, but then bring the shoulders of the opening in. I don't know if there's a kind of a rural binocular that addresses that.
So, okay, the width is, and the length is, what the width is, it doesn't really have to be eighteen feet. Because no matter what, they're gonna have to open a gate, whether it's two ballers or rustic or gate. You're gonna have to open it constantly.
You just said sixteen. Sixteen foot wide being a swing gate and then it has five feet, it uses four feet.
Are you saying the swing gate is like eighteen minus five feet or whatever? How long is the swing gate?
A swing gate?
How long do you think of the figure of the gap? You know what I'm saying, so how long are you proposing? Walking trail is offset to the right.
Right, yeah, so that is...
Out of that eighteen feet, you cover a...
No, whatever you guys decide on for like a width that you... If you kept it at eighteen, it would probably, you probably could do like a double leaf and it'll keep the profile down.
And total distance there would be...
Eighteen, or, you know, twenty, because you put some...
I think one of the, I think one of the problems with that is then what's gonna happen is you're gonna now have on this side, because you do want on Wells Street a perpendicular crossing. And therefore you have to have, you have to figure out, it really works well to have the opening directly across from this for the vehicles?
And that's where you want, and that's where you want the crosswalk, and you can have it. But the people who cross the crosswalk would just have to walk down ten feet and go through their little... You already have a sidewalk on this side. You line up the vehicle, you wanna line up the vehicle, you want...
Yeah, I think you're gonna find people don't like to do that. They'll, they'll go through, they'll go around. I mean, you always go the, the shortest distance if you found that you had to go down the sidewalk and then around. I think we're better off maybe having one of wooden gates, maybe having it so that it is open five feet in the middle.
Or just set back the wall a little, let people sneak around it.
Yeah, we could set it back.
Another desire.
Going around is pretty elaborate, because you have to make ten grades. An eighty-eight rate.
Can you go around it? I'm not sure you get the aesthetic of such a... Okay, so I've got an idea. Based on things. So you have the swing, you have the opening, and let's just keep it at eighteen feet. And then you have the swinging fence that's thirteen feet long. And supported, and then you have the five foot opening for the trail, right? And how the fence closes is supported into the ground.
There's not a post there.
It's not a post top. You pull it up and you swing it open, and you've got eighteen three feet.
And hopefully we can do it in sixteen.
Right, exactly.
But it's still sixteen plus five.
No, it's not, no it isn't, because you don't have a support in the middle of the whole thing, right? I'm saying...
It's a pin, there's a bar on it, not a post, not a... Those angles up.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that.
And how do you keep everybody in the brother from pulling that pin?
Well, I...
No, your box on this.
So the sidewalk could be up from this side.
That's offset, like you...
Yeah. But it's not just one opening.
It's still, it's still across from this, it's just across from one inch of this, not the middle of this. Now it's, it gave, it could be a rural natural, as David was talking about.
But it is not told eighteen feet, it's told...
You'll, no, no, eighteen or less.
Oh, all right.
Yes, eighteen or less. Just where it shuts and you door up the trail, but down to the ground.
But it could actually be sixteen.
Yeah, exactly. Or less.
We can get it in sixteen. So how do you, so we, our goal is to try to get the plans done, the estimates done by town meeting. And so if we could get, if we would make an effort with the police, I mean, with the fire department, to sort of allow us to reduce it more consistent with the, I think, with the use there. I mean, I wanna be unsafe. These things usually happen with a delegation to the chief. To schedule a meeting. We've had some experience with it, so... And then you go and make your case, and, and a lot of times, I mean, he's pretty reasonable about listening to the concerns. So I might suggest that we, you know, bring the Conway along, you know, so...
Oh, no.
No, no.
I'm busy.
So you've been at those meetings before, though, Dan?
That's why I don't wanna go again.
Okay. So how do you wanna, what direction are you giving us to? What if the chief says no? Well, if the chief says no, the question then is, will it have to be the full, you know, eighteen feet or will it accept six? What will it accept? Hopefully, yeah, we're, we're gonna answer, go down to fourteen, and if we can get to sixteen, that would be okay. That's kind of the way I would see it going. And I think your idea about, with swing gate with the more rural look, I think we can do that. We'll have, we'll have a concrete base for the post to go into, right? So, Richard? And that's easy enough to do.
I can envision what you're... We would like to only design the gate one more time. You should've come here first. I don't think it would've worked.
Tony, I have a dinner for you, come on.
Yeah, yeah, just take, take the large drive.
Yeah.
All right, so would you, would you like to have somebody from the planning board?
Oh, that'd be great, yeah.
So do you want me to coordinate with you, Al?
Yeah.
And then we'll see if...
Actually coordinate with him, I...
Oh, coordinate with him. We'll, we'll work as soon as possible.
Okay.
Okay.
So in the meantime, we continue?
We, we could, I don't see why we couldn't draft, do a draft decision.
Decision for next time?
Yeah.
Could it be sixteen feet?
We could, we could say sixteen feet, subject to negotiations with the fire department.
Well, if we can get it negotiated before, we could just have a number.
Yeah.
So what you're saying, I think that every single item that we have covered is acceptable to everybody we asked the question.
What we're talking about is, is, is that, is saving the pine tree on Ash Street and having a diagonal crosswalk. And then if access to the unpaid pathways is, is essential, then, then it's an informal access to those unpaid pathways.
Oh, I have this little tidbit now from the very beginning of the presentation of the layout, the surface material.
Our only concern is snow walls and trees. That's our only concern.
That is our...
That's it.
Perfect, okay.
This is a, this is a scenic roads permit. So we're gonna say, save the pine tree, let's open it, let the oak tree...
I don't, I don't agree with that, the oak tree.
You don't agree with that? We're sorry, going by Kim's recommendation on this, I'm sorry, Kim.
Well, Kim thinks the oak tree should be safe too, she's just concerned about the wood.
I just didn't see a...
All right.
I think there might be a way, I think we have a...
Okay. Well, I'm just trying to frame how our decision looks, okay? So I, I think we start with the, the idea that we're gonna look at a draft decision. And we talked about it again when we were reviewing the decision language. But I think the draft decision says, save the pine tree, let the oak tree go. Stipulated, I just, I, I prefer designation of the, of the width and the gate on Wells Street. And, and that's it.
The opening on Ash is not a...
The opening on Ash Street, I don't think anybody has a problem with. And the other two trees on Ash Street, I don't, well, the only, the one other tree on Ash Street, so it's okay, it's dead, so... The opening is twelve feet.
It's just that, I submitted is they call the fourth committee, so I, I think, given the nature of the maintenance situation, that you're not gonna go into the pieces late, that you'd be okay with the call sheet.
All right, so that's where we are, and we'll talk to the chief about negotiating, and we'll see if we can cut down on eighteen feet.
Yep. Michael, I missed the sidewalk that way. Could I hit at Steve's tree?
Yes.
Would it take that?
Yeah, right.
Does it would that in?
Right, exactly, so, like, could you show me?
Yeah.
Could I pick you up?
Yeah.
So how about the, the town, do you want to direct the work?
It'll be paid, it just won't be paid.
And I think, Michael, nothing to do with the decision, but what's the plan on bringing others on board and making sure that...
Yeah, that's...
Very little damage to the tree. It's a big, big deal, I'm sorry to bring it up late, but we did, we did a really good job of marrying the tree, and I think we saved a lot of trees.
That's pretty important, Owen.
I'll push for getting those ones on Ash Street, essentially. Oh, yeah, exactly, as we did, right, yeah.
All right, so we'll look at the draft decision when, Michael?
Uh, six, February second.
So we need to schedule our meeting with the, with the chief sometime between now and...
Sometime, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Oh, oh, yeah?
I said it didn't overlap at all, no, she's a freshman.
It's the only one I know of. Thank you.
All right, next, we're scheduled to review a, an application for a special day camp. Social permit day camp application, who's the, who's the applicant? Could you just explain to us what the day camp is? How many, how many attendees there will be?
Sure. So we're called Summer Camp, we've been around since two thousand and two out of New York. I've been running at Purchase College there for a long time. There's a, we're not, Kim, we're a program that runs weekly in the summer. We only run for three weeks this year, or we tend to run for three weeks. The last week of July and first two weeks of August, runs Sunday through Friday each week. We're gonna be at Regis College. We have, I have a map of where we're gonna be, it's a drop off area. The building, essentially, we're gonna make entrance to one of the first buildings we come up to. The drop off is actually kind of a circle there. And by that, we shouldn't be at much. We will only provide for, as our first year up here, for thirty seats. We don't expect it to go a lot, we never know, we'll see how it goes. Along the way, we'll introduce ourselves to the community. We maintain a three to one ratio at our camp, our program. So we, if we have thirty, we'll have ten staff, and we'll know better as we get closer, when people sign up. We teach computers, we teach coding, we teach animation, we teach beauty modeling, things like that. We're community builders at Purchase College, we've been established for so long. We have endowment on campus, I've served on the board of the Art Center there. And we've built a community there where, after all these years, there are about fifty teachers, and every teacher I have there was part of the program, were up in the program. So we're a community program that starts on sixteen. We teach them how to teach, and so we have some really high level of coding right now, more than, more than any other program we're aware of.
So there are thirty campers?
At most.
At most, with ten instructors?
Yes.
Right, so, all right, and so the impact is almost negligible. And how, how long did you say the camp is gonna run?
Three weeks.
Three weeks.
This year, three weeks, that's what we're scheduled for.
Starting when and ending when?
July twenty-eighth to August sixteenth.
And it's not an overnight camp, is that right?
It, it is.
It is overnight.
We don't know that we're getting any overnighters, our staff will be staying overnight. Most people come for the day, today or overnight option.
Oh, so your staff, is there a...
My staff, I'm bringing staff up from York.
So they're gonna stay on campus, okay, so well, that's fewer, fewer terms.
Yeah, they won't be commuting.
Right, right.
Um, how does it fit in the overall camp? You know, you want...
Uh, yeah, so it's, I guess it's what, you know, from eight to nine P M. So I'll pull up the other camps you can see here. So the last week of July is our busiest week, the, the next month in August gets, dies down a lot. And I just can't see here, this actually was called for here last summer. So we're dropping down the...
Does it include them?
Yeah.
And, and then it's all circled before. If that starts here and this time, this last year. This is all I see.
And last, last week July is...
Yeah, we actually begin on Sunday. Yeah, we come into orientation.
And you think most of the people are community, and they really don't have any sense of what they're doing?
Yeah, it's, it's a new round for us, yeah. We're making a big pressure, we have some open houses and things like that, but...
How, how old are the kids?
Ten to seventeen.
Oh, ten, oh.
Your campers coming. And you're thinking about signing up.
I don't sign much, though.
Well, how would you want the, for the operation to go in future years, would you, would you see the number of campers increasing?
Absolutely, in, in Europe, we do about a hundred and twenty-five a week. And also because we teach coding at such a high level, and there's nowhere else we're gonna go, we've established a year-round program that we hope will be established here eventually, once we get enough material. And that teaches coding all year round.
So that, the, the sort of paradigm for the camp would change over time as the number of students increase. And what are your projections, for example, next year and the following year? What do you hope for?
Next year, we'd like to do about six weeks. We'd like to double what we do.
Six weeks.
Hopefully, build on community.
Same number of campers or anything?
Probably next year, you know, it's just so hard to tell if we see that there's a greater interest in, we can always get more space.
So maybe what we do in this case, because it looks as though it's going to...
Increase.
Uh, increase and sort of morph into maybe different forms. The permit would extend for, for, at least for this first year, but, you know, if there's a, if, if, maybe it's a two-year permit.
Okay.
And then, and then if, if in the second year, this, you know, this increase of, you know, a hundred percent or something, then we, we'd wanna take a look at the impacts of that. And, but if, you know, it, it'd be a better feel of how it would evolve, might evolve over time after a year or two, so that we can keep track of it. You know, and I think it's, it's not a long-term permit, it's, at least this initial one would be for maybe two years. And look at it again and see where they are.
So one concern, and I'm sure you already thought of it, but that, we, which I guess is the last week of July, there are the extra four hundred people at Regis College from the...
Champaign camp?
Yeah. It's, that doesn't have the, the first week of August, and I assume the second week of August. So what's Regis's limit? Is that something...
Well, if it's about drop off and pickups, it is kind of a benefit that Summer Camp opens at eight A M. So not a little before the A M.
But does Regis have a limit? But does Regis have a limit?
I thought they did. I thought they, don't they have specials there now? Basically, it's tracking everything and they know when they're maxed out.
So last year with links at four hundred, they were pretty much maxed out because they had to rotate. Like they had to open up extra dining space and rotate around, so that, that pretty much is.
What was the total number when they were maxed out, you know?
So it would have been about like.
Sixteen?
Yeah, well, total campers also, yeah, we'd have been add another two hundred to that and take away the thirty, basically, so. You know.
So it's.
Seventeen, yeah. Seventeen, seventeen, yeah. Oh, eighteen hundred throughout the, throughout the town, um.
If you go back, though, it'll be there, so, you know, basically, right under that threshold. So this is kind of a, it's a classic summer.
Okay.
So each drop off is after, basically, August.
Yeah, it looks like the average is around twelve hundred and fifty, something, yeah.
So you have this, your school in New York City runs full-time? It's a real academic program?
Um, in Purchase, it runs weekends.
Weekends.
We have another learning center in Oklahoma, New Jersey, but that's.
So I was just wondering if, you know, your general goal was you would have a freestanding place, not necessarily at Regis, but to throw this, to have a year-round program.
Potentially, sure, yeah. I mean, what we like to do is partner with schools that actually have a CS, computer science program, which we just doesn't really have. And we can actually hire their employee or hire their students to work for us. But in this case, we actually enroll the teachers. So it just takes some time. It's a great program. The kids who come out of it are, are far ahead of everyone else in the field.
Sounds good. I don't see any downside. All right, so we will. Review our draft decision, then we'll give you the permit to operate the camp, um, which night?
Six.
Six of February. And you'll be good to go.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So Katie, if you could, could you just describe the process that we sort of all agreed to in respect to the, to the restriction?
Yes.
Of the property? That would be great.
Yes, so the restriction, as you may recall, requires there to be a limitation placed on these properties once they're divided such that, that both lots will be restricted to having only one residential dwelling and no further subdivision. Recording of this restriction references the flexible development lotting plan dated December fourth, two thousand and eighteen. There has been some concern over whether or not this restriction can be recorded prior to the issuance of the decision, which actually creates these lots. And so, so the proposal that we have with the board, which we have discussed, council and I have discussed, and Alan and Mai have been part of this discussion, is that what we propose to do is we have a signed declaration, or a signed restriction here, planning board has signed tonight. And then we, as town council, would hold it in escrow. And once the decision is recorded, once the planning board issues the decision and it is recorded, and the lotting plan is recorded, then we would then be authorized to record the restriction. And so, so basically, it's as if the, if it's signed as a done deal, it would just not be formally recorded at the registry of deeds until such time as the planning board completes the special permit.
Is there anything that could happen between the time we complete the special permit decision and the time you record that?
No, I mean, the, the condition precedent to us recording this is simply that the, the flexible lot subdivision, special permit gets issued and recorded by the, the property owner. The property owner chooses not to record that special permit and the lotting plan, then obviously, we never record this restriction. Which means, I mean, effectively, the status quo stays the same, you know? It's like.
Like nothing, yeah.
Like nothing happened.
All of this time.
Yeah, however, basically, we, we have an agreement that, um, once that's recorded, then we have the authorization to go forward and, and record this.
Okay.
Do you probably understand that?
Not to be concerned, this is like rocks solid.
Yes, yes.
Nothing else could happen.
Nothing else could happen. This, this goes into a special place in our office.
She held it up.
I hold it in escrow.
No one else can come in and say, before you do that, I'm going to do this, right?
You mean, someone else come in and file a different permit, or?
Yeah, between those two times.
Yeah, like if there was a day in between the two, someone on that day filed something.
I don't say day.
If you want us to, we can do that. I mean, you need somebody come in and, and.
There's a certain amount, you know, I went through this with you, Katie.
I understand, yes.
You know what the background is, so.
Yeah, right.
So the, the, the board would just like there to be no space.
Right.
Where they think it happens.
Yeah, we can, we can arrange to have them recorded on the same day.
I can tell you, uh, we use for recording and not to record something as that.
You're basically next in line.
Yes.
Can somebody cut in front of her?
Don't sprain your ankle.
I, I honestly, I mean, this is, this is not an atypical type of procedure to follow in a real estate transaction such as this. Um, and, and I think the board can, can be fairly safely assured that this is.
The word failure is a modified.
That is, the board can be assured.
I'm just curious, what, why did we have to do it this way? Why couldn't it first be record the deed restriction and then permit issue? Why was that?
Because the deed restriction references a lotting plan and, and a flexible development special permit that has not yet been issued or recorded. And in order to, to complete this.
Oh, yeah, that, that condition already exists.
That has to, that has to exist.
Doesn't refer to something.
So we can't record, the registry of deeds is not going to accept this.
Okay.
To, to place restriction on lots that have not yet been created or recorded.
Something unlawful about doing in that direction.
Yes.
That you have to, to make the announcement, right?
Okay. So we're looking at the flexible subdivision decision, grand decision?
And I would just, before you proceed with that, um, there is a requirement of the planning board sign and have their signature notarized on this restriction. We have the original here tonight for you to do that.
Yeah, we'll do that.
And so, you know, pass that to.
Okay, all right.
To ensure that that happens.
Why don't we do this now and then we can move on to decision.
Well, needs to be notarized and Jonathan is, is able to do that this evening.
Hey, Mike, you have another.
You forgot your driver's licenses.
Um, no, I don't.
Okay. Yes, I don't know. Are you going to check your driver's licenses?
I think I know all of them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you do the note to me?
Personally, no.
You'll be the.
Yes. So what do we do about those?
She's still on the authority, right?
I just need to.
This is the restriction.
Mary was all concerned with what's happening. It was a trap.
I know, I'm sorry too.
Just one topic. Yeah, just.
Okay. He's going to valorize it right now. You mind?
Yes.
The changes that Jonathan emails you about, those are.
Those are in, those are in.
You might forget that last one.
Yeah, go to, they have a condition, reference, they have a condition, yeah.
Those are the.
Nicely done. Is that attached to here?
Does, does it move that frame?
Um, no, I have. Yeah, I have it. It's, it's the, we made edits to it last time. So this is the updated version. Two A. Actually, I do not have those, but I have them up there. Nice, I'll be here. That's a critical thing.
No, we should have.
Vivian graph.
You look like a medium graph.
I don't know what those are.
Love that, yes.
Love that.
I've killed all of our friends.
Must be kind of a good view. It is in the, um, are you... This question was...
Age what?
Uh, age twenty-one.
So, is it already...
It didn't... Because it's an attachment.
It's an attachment.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, just like this, it's a draft. What have we got so... We can't see. So... What's the... Do you have a face on? Or do you have a... What's it? Yeah, so...
Some more minutes are coming.
More minutes are... Yeah, but we don't have any to add to...
No.
To this today.
Right.
Yeah.
We should...
There is, maybe at the end of that?
Two minutes will be attached.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Asking my luck to... That is for...
Please, please, please.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the restriction again. You know, so we don't have to, but we've seen this by... I just have three minutes.
Just got a question. Are we about ready?
Yeah.
Yeah. Any significant changes? Okay, why don't you go ahead, Steve?
Okay, so on page six, item four point thirteen signs. I believe that should be G four, not G one. The next item, four point fourteen, I think that's just one C left too. Is that right?
Yeah.
There's no special...
There's no special condition. It's the standard condition that it presents.
Item four point seventeen shade trees, that should be G two. Next page. Item D I. That should be G three, then G four, then G two.
Okay.
Next page. Item... Well, what page?
Page eight.
First item under the irrigation. I mean, actually above that, the first CC design data, part review demolition stone walls and the existing house will have its particular features protected by a special curve. That should be G one and G three. And the next one about irrigation. Just wanted to make sure that this is correct, that existing irrigation on lot two will be allowed to be used in the same capacity until such time as site plan approval is required for the lot. Now, I think we had talked about changes to landscaping, but maybe that's the same as I...
How does it come under set plan approval, yes? Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
It ends up in service, I think.
Yeah, okay.
Landscaping on my lot. Your lot.
Yeah. And then item F, the CC one, semi little appearance, that should be G three and then G four. Then, this one is a question on page twenty-one. So the view easement is optional?
Yes.
Okay, we all knew that. I didn't realize it was optional.
I didn't either, but I was, I'm thinking about it and I'm not sure it's... It's hugely significant. It was something that the owners wanted to preserve, so if they give up that right, then...
It's something I wanted.
It just seemed like a good idea.
It is a good idea. But we can't oppose them, the easement, they're suggesting doing that if they elect not to. I don't think we can prevent that. I mean, that's my...
Some of the shade trees that we're talking about, I like the development. Most of the stuff is determined, but I think we're... You know, I think it's hard not to avoid them. The other question I have is the shade trees. There is some land in front of the wall. That wouldn't be such a bad place for one or two of those.
The power lines, so I don't want to avoid the power lines.
The right of way. The wall is basically the property line.
Right, right. It'd be in your right of way, but could those, could any of those trees be planted in one there?
That's a whole different...
We can't require that.
Yeah.
Oh, I wouldn't... The town would have to require that, just...
The town could accept it.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah, that's something you have to talk with the DPW about.
Okay, yeah, because there's room there.
We can't, we actually didn't stipulate exactly where those trees are going to have to be planted, but we can't require them to be planted somewhere off the property.
Okay. If he does it before the new owner, you go to camp with the type of tree and the...
Yeah, yeah. I just have a question on page, actually on the special condition two. The second sentence, additional screening and scaling planting. Scaling planting means, what are you trying to say there?
The scaling plantings are usually the trees that don't necessar... They're not screening the building, but instead of like, if you have a house and instead of having the large lawn up to it, you have a few trees in front of it that don't necessarily screen the building, but just provide it some context. And that...
So maybe you can fill out context for that.
Okay.
Scaling planting is just a... I'm not... Is that a typical term? It is?
Yeah.
So people would know what that meant, so that I've never actually seen one.
Yeah, yeah, Kim uses it often.
She does, okay, okay.
Evangeline, you have the... This file is by Robert, and then you've got the applicant Mary. Am I missing something? Yeah, Jonathan, you want to explain that?
Two different names. You've got the applicant.
Obviously, it's Bob and, oh, Robin, sorry, the owner Mary.
I'm going to have her sign something giving permission for it. You have a lot of time.
On the same...
Sanburri.
The old owner's Mary. What's that?
The owner's Mary.
Oh, okay.
But we assume that Rob has been...
He hasn't said much, and he wasn't allowed, so he thinks...
Oh, yes, he has.
Shouldn't it be consistent when you say the applicant? Well, Rob has been acting as the applicant, so I think he's the applicant, but the actual listed property realtor is Mary, God. You're missing a space, huh?
But here it does say the applicant Mary, so...
Yeah, you should... Oh, okay.
Why can't we see any credit mortgages along here?
That's...
The owner has assigned. Page two, that page, the second line.
Which nature you want?
No, it was a missing... Yeah, there is a space missing. Lot one along. Lot one along is missing a space.
Where are we looking at?
Page two, page twenty-one.
Yeah.
The middle line, lot one along.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Pretty good.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yep.
All right. I think we scraped the bottom of the barrel there.
And then we all looked at the story. And this is going to be called, what will this be named?
Exhibit B.
Just exhibit B, is that...
Exhibit B is...
No, it's...
And it's in...
It's incorporated.
And we're going to vote on this first, in the draft, or...
No, no, we looked at this last time.
It's part of the...
So it's all official.
Yep.
No official.
Should I go ahead?
Do it.
I agree that we approve the certificate of action for the flexible subdivision for ninety-eight of laying with the changes noted.
For the favor.
I...
You're done.
There you go. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Not using country guys.
Believe it or not, it's not the hardest one. By any stretch.
Feel that way, you know? I'm willing to agree that, thank you very much. All right.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thanks, Katie.
And the lot will probably be gone tomorrow.
Really?
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, you could approach.
Thank you for the suggestion, by the way. You did a great suggestion.
Yeah, that's great. Much pleasure.
That's kind of great, huh?
We thank you. Thank you.
The tough thing is, I can't get Alabama and the Patriots to win the championship in the same year.
Oh, yeah.
It's depressing, it's depressing.
Well, then you get one championship at least every year. You don't have to do here.
My greatest fear is that they win the Super Bowl and they all retire.
Wow, yeah.
We're back to the nineteen-seventies.
No, I don't get football.
Transit congestion study.
Transit congestion study, we're up, I mean, we're very excited.
We have no suggestion.
Look at this. Oh, look at this.
Talking about your show.
Yeah, we're fine.
Sorry. You're a super nerd.
You got the update. I got, I got, yeah, the very, very...
Uh, no, I do.
Wait till the end, then you're good.
You might take...
No, they're going to be that long.
Jonathan too.
Thank you, thanks a lot, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Charlie, we'll be there for the one, we enjoy the answer.
So this story begins at the last League of Women Voters meeting at Canada's night. I think you were there, actually. And a nice lady raised her hand when Chris was up on the stage and said, is there anything the town can do about this damn traffic?
Yep.
And Chris kind of looked at me and I kind of looked at you, and you kind of looked at her, and we said, hey, good question, can we get back to you on that?
I think Chris said no.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Because pretty much everybody agrees it, there's not much.
It kind of sparked Evangeline and I to say, maybe not, maybe there's nothing you can do, but let's give it a shot.
Sure.
So we put basically two, two and a half months into this study. And so in an attempt to answer that wonderful question that lady came up with. So the topics that we're going to discuss is kind of like a process that we went through, so I'll describe that to you quickly. So we're going to give you some more background on the motivation, some numbers that I think you'll find are interesting. And then we said, we don't want to try to conquer the world, we want to frame this thing so it's very doable, you know? So we'll talk about what that framework is. And then we engaged on some really, really interesting outreach. We engaged with twenty-one people in county, experts and partners in other towns, and Evangeline's going to cover that slide.
Gee.
And then we broke that down, we studied it all, and we said, okay, what are the takeaways? Number one, overall, and then what are the takeaways that apply to us, we felt? In terms of, and then we listed what we call the opportunities. The opportunities that sit in front of us, right, that we can do. And of course, they're not free, and you have to be practical and say, where are you going to get that money? So we'll talk a little bit about where that funding might come from. And then we wanted to make it real and say, okay, let's not make it just purely theoretical. What can we do quickly to make, to take the next steps and begin to make this happen? And before we go any further, I did want to tell you, I'm not a guy that's necessarily saying great things about state government, as you recall. But I have to say, in this engagement, these conversations around transportation, we encountered a lot of bright lights. I mean, I really liked the people that we talked to. I liked the ideas that they had, and I liked the energy that they had. And they were all very, very practical, so I was really, really impressed. I'm not sure why it's the case, but it was...
You were stunned and amazed.
Yeah, it was great, so bravo.
It's a year, I think.
Okay, so this, unfortunately, this map, you know, comes, it's no surprise to anybody. This is what we see every day. For about two to four hours, we have gridlock. And I wanted to give you some numbers here, from a congestion standpoint. Boston drivers spend fourteen percent or sixty hours a year of their drive in congestion. That rates the seventh worst of three hundred and nineteen U.S. cities, and it's getting worse, right? And the wall found Boston commute time has increased thirty-four percent in the last ten years. So, I don't mean the depression, I'm just saying, those are the facts, or the numbers behind the map on the right-hand side.
Everybody working at home now.
Yeah, exactly. That's part of the behavioral issue. So when you experience that, of course, you know that it's detrimental to quality of life and the productivity. But the more you think about it, it's an economic issue for the region as well. It's really pinching the economy, and it's really causing damage to the environment as well. It's not a clean way to live. So we said, okay, great, so this is something real. There's no easy answers, as you implied, but let's try to improve the situation. So that's what we tried to do. Okay, next. Okay, so here's, remember I said we tried to make it practical? We said start small, be practical, prefer action over theory, and try to get this thing done in two and a half, three months, which we did. And the next simplifying factor we had is, let's not think about traffic overall, let's try to focus on commute hours, the things we can do to improve the peak hours, right, the loop situation in peak hours. And in particular, reduce this one person per car phenomenon that we see around here. And I'm not criticizing anybody, people have to do what they have to do. But when I go out onto one seventeen in the morning, I don't dare take a right. Sometimes I have to take a left, go west. And I just see, you know, a stream of cars where it's one person per car, and they have to, you know, stop at Church Street, and if you back up, they're stopping at one twenty-six, and if you back up, they're stopping at Four Corners, and you say, oh my gosh, you know, that's crazy. And I thought many times of, what can we do to get two people in a car? Or three people in a car, or just make this whole thing more efficient? So that's where our minds were. And the third thing is that we acknowledge that it's a regional challenge, you know? Traffic abords a vacuum, so if we do something to solve our problem, we'll just be consumed by the towns around us. So we have to think of it as, it's not just a Western issue, how can we work with other people to solve it? And then we acknowledge that solutions are combinations of new services and behavior. So you can put a new slot of services out there to address this issue, but you've also got to try to influence behavior, right? And there are three things I want to say about behavior. If we were going to try to change behavior, you know, as a town, as a region, you know, I don't, I think the best way to do it is just directly, to say, if you go to work this way, it'll be better, cheaper, faster for you. It'll improve your life, it'll improve your work somehow. Don't try to talk people into, oh, it's going to change the world, you know, or it's going to make the world a better place. So we want to get into benefits for people. The second thing, we noted that, and especially after this round of discussion, I think the culture shifts are going in our favor. You know, whereas we might say, you can't get people to change and travel a different way. The younger people are, the more open-minded they are about that, so, and I think people are appreciative of that. So if other services are offered, they're more willing to experiment with them now than let's just say twenty years ago. And this, the third thing is that small changes can make a big difference. So we can, I'm, I'm not saying anything we're gonna suggest here, everyone in Weston has been agreed with. But if five percent of commuters agree to it, it's gonna make a big difference, right? So that's the third thing. And then lastly, we established a timeframe. We didn't wanna step on any toes, you know, because there is a traffic at sidewalk committee. And they have lots of projects they're thinking of, lots of traffic relief and calming projects. We didn't wanna try to get involved in that. And in the longer term, the state, the region, they come up with all these, you know, very good long-term plans. Didn't wanna try to redo that. We thought, let's fit in the middle, let's see if we can think of some ideas that might do some good in the next two to four years. Okay. All right, so then we began, this is Eamonn's slide.
So this is basically kinda done by levels of, of government. When you talk to the federal level, you primarily are talking to our state. The MPO stands for Metropolitan Planning Organization. The big thing about them to note is they distribute the federal highway funds, so.
Online.
Exactly. So when Route thirty, Wellesley Street, that was done with MPO funding. So they also fund studies, they also can give you seed money for programs, like if you wanted to start up a shuttle and show you could do that. That's, so they're a very important player. We looked to some of the state expertise. Tony and I both went to Mastop Conference that they call Moving Together. That conference getting, is getting bigger every year. This year it was like overflowing, pretty much. But they put out a lot of good ideas there at that conference. The government put out what the future of transportation. Tony had ended kind of the opening session of that plan, or they, or not opening session, the unveiling session of that plan, where they talked about, you know, whether they see the future challenges of. And it was a very forward-thinking plan a little bit. It talks about, you know, you have to envision roads as not just a mechanism for moving cars, you have to, you transit as a mechanism for moving people. And if you retrain your thinking that way, you can probably come to some better solutions. Safe routes to school is one of the more immediate states organizations we're looking to. And in fact, we've arranged for the, the regional representative who covers Weston, this area around here, to come and do a presentation next, next meeting on Safe Routes to School. Within the region, we talked to Route one twenty eight Business Council. What they do is they are what's called a Transit Management Agency. They provide, mainly what they do is provide shuttle buses for reverse commuters from Alewife to some of the business areas here around Waltham. But they also will do studies for towns who are members to them. We talked with the MAPC, our Metropolitan Area Planning Council. We talked with their transportation director. Metro West Regional Collaborative, that's our sub-region to the MAPC. They, this is a constant topic at their council meetings. Some specific towns with experience, Lexington has both a shuttle that they, the town runs, and a Route one twenty-eight shuttle that goes out to a business area and they had some airport space. So we talked to their town planner. Westboro has a shuttle. And their shuttle, the thing about them is they've actually, their shuttle is kind of self-sufficient, it doesn't run with subsidy, which is pretty unique. The Braintree Mayor, he was, he was part of the panel discussing the governor's commission report. Obviously deals on a, on a much larger scale on a small city there, but has a lot of expertise, very willing to talk to us. I didn't actually talk to anybody in Los Angeles, but I did.
He's fire.
Yeah. But they did, there was a webinar on a traffic demand model that they've worked on. So instead of using normal IT trip generation standards, which you know is what they normally use for all the traffic studies, they've come up with their own data that's much more local to them. And they've come up with how much, if you do various transit management measures, like if you provide bike racks and showers at, at a development, how much is that expected to reduce the trips? So they have a lot more, they can point to, like when we talked to Liberty Mutual and we say, well, what are you doing for transit demand? They have a much more informed way of looking at it, because they've done a lot of data work. It does take a lot of data work, but they get the benefit of that.
Bike racks and showers?
Well, I'm just saying that's an example. Or you, you could do other things like shuttles, or if you had like.
No, no, wait a minute. I'm just interested in the word showers.
Oh.
Is that, are there actually shower facilities that are associated with bike racks?
Yeah, because people get in, they wanna be able to change and get to.
It's a lead requirement.
It is?
It means in the building, it doesn't mean outside.
Okay.
Not by the bike rack.
Right, right, right.
You don't have a little shower.
Like a little. Like an airport.
Yeah.
Okay.
Tony put up a, a post on, on the Weston Facebook group, just asking, are there any ideas for traffic? And we compiled that, took a look at them, took a look at some of what the ideas people are having. We did talk internally in our town, we talked to Chris Houston and Clint Schuckel of the Traffic and Sidewalk Committee. And some of the private opportunities we have is Uber, Lyft and Lime, those are all various, you know what Uber and Lyft are? Lime Bikes is a bike sharing program that's operating regionally here. McKinsey is a, they're a think tank, right?
The. Management consulting company.
Management consulting company, so, okay.
So the guy who has the boss in office is fascinated with traffic. Does a lot of work with towns and cities. And so we're gonna review this plan with him.
Yeah.
And you have a contact of professor, contact at MIT. Terry Alon, who are now a professor at MIT. He also has a fascination with traffic and he wants to walk through the plan. And the other guy that I'll mention in particular, do you remember when we were thinking about the Olympics? And there was a gentleman who stood up and said, not such a good idea.
Right.
And he fought the Olympics, his name is Chris.
Dempsey.
Dempsey. Chris Dempsey. Turns out now he's headed up this group called T4 Transportation for Massachusetts. And we're gonna talk to, we're gonna walk through this plan with him too. So he's a great guy, he's a good guy.
He's on the governor's commission?
What's that?
Is he on the governor's commission?
No, he's not on the commission, but they used him to actually announce the, to unveil the commission's report.
So if I understand correctly, you've, you've got sort of a scaffold here.
Yeah, exactly.
And what you wanna do is test it by talking to individuals who have expertise or real, or interest and background.
Exactly.
In this, in this issue.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So I'll, I'll boil it down to experts and partners, because a lot of these guys are experts, a lot of these guys will be partners in terms of the town. But Eamonn was great at, you know, plugging into a lot of these people and helping me with the language.
Yeah.
So by nature, it's the old plan. Okay, so at any rate, oh, there's also, you wanna talk through the plan?
Yeah, so this, I think we've gone over some of these plans, like.
Okay.
You know, Metro, Metro Plan in twenty fifty is, you know, the plan I've been keeping up with. Destination twenty forty is the MPO plan. Those are the two big ones I'm keeping on my radar. Focus forty is the, that's the MBTA Investment Plan. We did briefly look at that. And then the Future of Transportation, that's the one that just came out from Governor Baker. And that's, you know, as I talked about, that's, that's basically kind of rethinking how we do transport, transit.
So after all that, we took a nap, a long nap. And then we said, we put everything on the table, kinda like you're implying out, and we said, what did we find? And the first good news is that we're thinking alike, right? What we said to begin with when we framed what we were doing, they're thinking too. So either we're both crazy or neither of us is crazy. You know, they're thinking in terms of the larger impact, not just, you know, productivity and quality of life, but they're also thinking economic pinchings, right, and environmental and growth. And then they advise us that, hey, this is not a one-off thing, this is a, a regional thing, right? So it requires lots of cooperation. And the third thing, like underlying it, I felt like the whole thing is kinda like what Eamonn was saying. It's more people and fewer vehicles, right? I heard that time and time again, and I think that drove a lot of their thinking. And I wanted to mention to you guys that there's a corollary to this, that, you know, there's a concern that the state is ultimately planning to widen Route twenty or widen one seventeen. And that, and after, I went through all this and I looked at all their projects and I looked at all their philosophies and I looked at all their long-term plans and said, I think it would be very unlikely that they would widen, plan to widen one seventeen or, or plan to widen Route twenty. That was my sense. Again, is, I like to put numbers to things.
The reason you feel that way is because you, you think maybe that they, they believe it would be, it's not simply.
Traffic abords a vacuum, so whatever that relieved, it would just cause more traffic elsewhere. They wanna solve it in a bigger way, which we're gonna get into in the next slide.
Exactly.
Right, exactly, or people, fewer vehicles, not more vehicles. Right, exactly. So just for context, the, that, what's this stand for, Something Improvement Program?
Oh, Capital Improvement Program.
Capital Improvement Program for all of the DOT is three point four billion dollars, right? And that comes from a lot of different sources that I never really figured out. There's a lot of federal sources, a lot of state sources, some private sources that I didn't really get to the bottom of. But that's a significant amount of money. And that compares, just to let you know, the total state budget is forty-two billion. So it's about a little under ten percent of the state budget is spent in transportation. And that's spent not just in expansion, they spend in reliability and modernization and expansion. So I just wanted to swim in that a little bit. The MPO that you mentioned, the money that comes in from the government that can be spent on projects, one of which could be things that we propose, right? As about a hundred million a year comes in for improvement from the federal government. And then what drives these things or what they're thinking of economically and demographically, they're thinking, hey, in twenty forty, our population's getting increased by something like ten percent. The resident, you know, extra sixty thousand, six hundred thousand residents, additional three hundred and fifty thousand jobs.
Is that optimistic? That's, you know, they really do believe that Massachusetts is not gonna shrink, it's gonna grow.
That was consistent across the.
I know.
That's consistent across all the plans.
People are super curious what it is.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Okay.
So I'm not an expert in economic growth, I'm just saying, I looked at all those plans and that was kinda the average of what I heard from all the plans. Okay, so let's talk about what I call their medium-term opportunities. So what are they planning transportation-wise that we can learn from? And from a standpoint of services, they're really emphasizing better transit, right? That's number one for them. It's giving people more options, you know, more frequent trains and more buses and more shuttles.
The trains that run a town.
And better. Exactly, yeah, that's the reliability budget. And better connections, getting people to the trains. And it has a lot to do with the ankle here, is last and first mile connection. So that's basically, especially for us, it's a very unsolved problem and you'll see that, we'll get to that. They're spending a lot of time on ride-sharing, now called TNC.
Yeah. Transportation Network Company.
That's what Uber is now called, is TNC, pooling. And then bikability. And again, that's more oriented toward the density of Boston than the density of Weston. But there are some things that Weston can learn, I think, there. And if you look at what sort of they're recommending to towns like ours in the medium term, they're saying, number one, do a survey.
Do a survey.
So.
They say that number two and three as well.
Exactly, Eamonn's middle name is Survey. I got into a meeting with a guy and I wanted to discuss all kinds of ideas and he would not get off survey. He said, until you do a survey, I'm not talking to you. So.
Survey of what?
Yeah, did you give any?
So a survey of residents and their needs, like, you know, what is their, what are their travel needs? What is their behavior, how do they get there, you know? And then three, kinda what's their feedback on what you're proposing? Those are big things, but you get into a lot more.
Two surveys. So after you've got the first survey with the data in.
Yeah, then you go back and say, here's my solution, what do you think?
Right.
Exactly, exactly. But there's a lot, you know, I'm the amateur at it. There's survey groups that are experts you bring in and they work out, they map out the survey for you. And I think this guy can serve probably five surrounding communities.
Yeah, they're, they're with Route one twenty eight Business Council, so yeah, they have a lot of member community.
It's one of the thing, it's one thing for us to talk about this or even other residents to talk about it theoretically. It's when you get to numbers that you can really start saying, oh, here's an idea. So if these people are all going there, maybe, you know, there's a solution to that, right? They're really focused on what they call gateway cities. They realize not everything is gonna be centered on Boston, you know? There are other economic areas and other travel centers. And they're gonna be building services around that and they're saying, think of what you can do to leverage that. So one gateway city is Waltham, for example. So that's their guide to us, is to say, think of leveraging Waltham as much as you possibly can, the buses that are coming, the trains that are coming, the shuttles that are coming. Thirdly, and there's great emphasis on this, is say, try to work together, you know? Services that you put together, okay, it doesn't have to be your town doing it, you can do it in coordination with three or four other towns. And not just the services, but if there are vehicles involved, share those vehicles, share the cost of those vehicles. Next is they're saying, don't try in a vacuum to solve a problem and come up with a permanent solution. Pilot, you know? Come with an idea that you think is pretty good and pilot it. Come up with that money and up interest to pilot it and let it either fail quickly or if it's. So that's really sort of a thread through all of what they had to say. And then actually, of course, learn and tap your funding sources, go get money to get it done. So one thing I wanted to be upbeat about is, is kind of all, some of this is already at work in Weston. There's a, there's a concept called complete streets. It's not, you know, earth-shattering concept, but it was sort of authored by the design firm for a town center called UTU. You feel like you've never designed in, in Boston. And end up winning a nationwide award and everybody's taken on this concept called complete streets. And it's very simple, it's just acknowledging that streets are not just for cars. You design streets to consider pedestrians, to consider transit, to consider bikability and to consider activities, right? And, I mean, this is not Weston Town Center, but you can see, a lot of these thoughts were incorporated in Town Center. And you know, when I raised my hand at their presentation, I said, hey, what about bikability? You know, that's where this came from.
Although I don't see any bike racks there. Where are they?
They're somewhere, they're hidden around the trees there, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, you know, bravo to the town for choosing this firm and for the term, to the firm for implementing a lot of these things.
So two is a bus stop, I think?
Yeah, two is a transit stop.
What's seven? What's that all about?
I think it's.
They're working to the road.
Maintenance, so that things can still flow while there's maintenance.
Okay, so you get around the maintenance.
Exactly, exactly. So, I guess, not rocket science, but it's nice to have this baseline to follow. All right, so that's my pitch for the town center. Okay, now, so we've said medium-term what they said to us. Now here's the stuff, just FYI, here's the longer-term stuff that we heard coming out. And the first is, the kind of vehicles they're thinking about, they wanna go electric, right? Because it's cleaner. I'm not completely sold on cleaner, but, electric vehicles being cleaner, but we won't get into that. That's what they say. They're really focused on autonomous vehicles. Vehicles that can be smarter and therefore traffic can be denser and carry more capacity. And it can be smarter about pooling too. So it's easier to track and say, oh, I'll go pick up three people real quickly if you have these things automated, which I like. And they're estimated, again, if you look at all of them, they're averaging, saying that six percent sales of cars will be autonomous vehicles by twenty forty. Maybe a little upbeat there.
I think exactly, I keep hearing this, that's just, I keep hearing this ten years, that autonomous vehicles will really ever last.
Yeah, so.
You know, that, that's actually pretty pessimistic as well.
Well, there's different points to the ten years.
Autonomous vehicles are not just cars, buses too, you go ahead.
So it's, they say that they will have the self-driving car, I think, by ten years? Then there's different points of market infiltration, you know, to when they see the majority of cars on the road being autonomous. And then there's different levels of autonomy too. The highest level is the connected vehicle where they, it not only drives itself, but it talks to the other vehicle so you don't.
It's where you can go down.
Yeah, five cars in front of you, it knows it's stopping already, so you all stop together.
Lastly, they're acknowledging that trains are in solution, everything, there's so much, so many rails and so much room for rails. So they're saying.
Spoil the boy.
More and more, we're gonna connect with buses. So again, longer term, that's something we build into our recommendations, but there it is. And then they are thinking longer term in terms of behavior to adjust land use or allow for more efficient movement. You know, multifamily development, strips of multifamily development. Encouraging staggered work hours and work from home to reduce the peaks. And then also, you've heard recently, it's been.
Right to the tip of the spear.
The congestion pricing. Of course, I think the state's made a run of that once or twice, the governor never quite signs it, but I think inevitably he will probably sign it. And then, of course, they think a lot about climate change, both in terms of transportation's, reducing transportation's contributions to it, right? And then protecting ourselves from it, because they feel like it's gonna happen, so let's harden our assets as best we possibly can. And that's in their thinking. So my feed. My feedback to them, after they've, I've read all this stuff and talked to all these people, there's one challenge. All those planning documents we read and all the people we talked to. There's no master plan, you know? You know, they're all sort of like competing, plan MBTA and, you know, the regional thing and then the governor's thing and all that. It's like, I went to one of them, I said, so which one is the most important, you know, in case they conflict or... And there wasn't a good answer, so that would be my recommendation to them is to think through integrated planning between all those great plans, right? And the second is, I didn't hear a lot from them on communicating with the public, right? It's all kind of, it's really good people, really good planning, really good planning. They're talking to themselves and I think, open it up, you know? Survey. Open it up. Okay, next. Okay, so therefore, given all that, right? You know, we took another nap and we said, okay, given all that...
And decided to do surveys.
Right, what, what is the answer? You know, what can we do in the medium term to perhaps improve the situation according to survey level to the top? So we've got, we've got, Imei, you want to talk anymore about survey? I think we've made the point.
I think we've made the point, survey.
Well, let me ask, what, the only survey you did was, like, two people, Chris and, and Facebook.
Well, this is all the, we're talking about surveying all the residents, the question. A mailer goes, I'm not sure all... Yeah, exactly.
There's several ways we could do it.
Right, right. So we basically want to map out Weston and say, where are people going during commute hours? Where are they going to? When are they going? Where are they coming from? Where are they coming? So it's not just up in the air, you know, we know where people were, where people live and where people were. Is the idea.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, and then consider pilots. And the three pilots that I think make reasonable sense are, first of all, shuttle service from into train stations and then pilot that with one neighborhood. You know, not do it for all neighborhoods. Do what Lexington has done, what Westboro has done. Didn't we talk to Acton as well?
No, we didn't talk to Acton, just those two.
Okay, just those two. Work with them and put together a pilot of a shuttle service and see if we can serve one neighborhood and really influence commuters there. Get them to either the nearest train station or even to the Waltham train station where they have more choices, right? They have more choices of leaving in the morning and coming back in the evening in the evening. Secondly, and this is, so we can learn from other towns on that one, is what I like. The second one is partnering with Uber or Lyft on pooling services. And here again, MBTA?
MBTA has done it, yeah.
MBTA has done this, so that's something we can learn from. So we subsidize the pilot there, so again, choose a neighborhood, maybe choose a couple neighborhoods and have Uber pooling service available to them. And that would probably be to train stations, but we could work with them and say, maybe it's to office locations, right?
Yeah.
Right, because I was just going to, you know, Sports Club and the poor people on Lexington Street coming out in the evenings, that's horrible, that's tragic.
Did anybody make an left turn?
Right, just the whole way from Boston Sports Club all the way to Weston. That must take forty minutes, you know? So we can reduce, that's a benefit to Waltham, I understand. But it's a benefit to Weston residents.
Lexington Street.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And then the third thing, which is a little out there, I understand, but we want to try it or float it, is more frequent trains than croses being, we mimic like trains with shuttles. So one of the complaints that I've heard from residents is that the reason I don't take a train is it locks me into Boston and, you know, coming home at a certain time. If I want to stay in Boston and have dinner, the train doesn't run late enough. So if we have shuttles waiting for people at North Station that give you a direct connection to Waltham and/or a direct connection to Kendall, you know, they'll have more options in the evening and they maybe be more likely to take the train in the morning time. So that, that addresses that one complaint. Okay, the next thing, I think we're already doing, so it's lovely that it's up there. Apply some of these best practices that close friendly developments could have gone. In terms of shuttle service, which we've talked to people about, and I think it's a plus for the development is to be back to me. And bike friendly, they're close, butted up against the rail trail. So just plug them in and I'm not saying they're going to go to work, but if it gets a little bit of traffic on the road, that's great. If they just want to go to Town Center, when it's bikeable, that's great. And then the We Work For Residents that came up from one of our meetings with the neighborhood at the Forty B Developments, which I love that idea and I think it's...
We share office space?
Shared office space in the development, right? And it's more valuable than a ping pong table, right? And the developer gave positive feedback on that. He thought it would, would be a benefit and a draw for some people renting apartments. So again, that staggers people, that gets people off the road in the morning.
Well, just to follow up on that, not only did the developer was enthusiastic about it, but when it came up at one of the neighborhood meetings, the neighborhood people were enthusiastic about it.
Yeah, right, exactly. And another piece of feedback, just like that, Al, is the gentleman saying, was the mayor of Braintree said, don't limit that shuttle service to the apartment complex.
Yeah.
Allow neighbors to walk into the apartment complex and suffer that shuttle, right? So... We've talked a little bit about making Weston more bike friendly, the idea is connecting the dots. We got the rail trail, let's connect the rail trail to train stations as best we can. Same thing to Town Center, I think special things will happen then. I've been surprised at the popularity of the rail trail. I've been surprised how many people already bike into Boston in nice weather. So I think the more connections that we have, the more behavior changes that way. And then collaborate on service, you know, don't stop talking to other towns, have this be the beginning, you know, of that kind of conversation, not the end. And then Imei, you want to talk about the funding sources, I think?
Okay, yeah, so the MPO, like I said, they will, they have a specific pot of money. It's much smaller than their infrastructure pot of money, but they do have a pot of money for pilot projects. They call it community transportation services. So that is something to like start the shuttle service or start the Uber pool. The MBTA specifically, when we talked to an MBTA board member, she said that she wants to direct it to much more pilot projects. You know, they're looking for people to try and get their solutions out there. The Bar Foundation is, that's about the only philanthropic organization I know that funds transit-related projects. Right now they're working on Bus Rapid Transit is what, is what they're looking at. And then in, for the town survey, that's something that we could, that the town could pay for. It's not a big ticket item, but it, as I've talked to, we're talking probably in the range of five thousand dollars. So, you know, we handle those kind of collections all the time.
Okay, now the last slide is making a real, like, what can we do in the short term? So we want to continue to socialize this idea, you know, and have people react to it. So Imei and I have actually turned this into a paper and we've, we're going to present it for consideration. We pitched it to the Massiotate Transportation and Innovation Conference. So we're having to accept it and then it'll get better because of that and then it'll get more socialized and we'll get feedback from it, I think it'll be great. And then we don't need to go into all of them, but there's a few other studies that we need to go over.
Yep.
And the one thing I want to mention in that bullet is, there's a board position up for bid at the MPO. And so it requires the chairman of the board of selectmen to be the representative, but he can assign delegates to go at the step. So some combination, we're going to pitch Harvey, we talked to Chris about it, he thinks Harvey'd be open-minded. But we're going to pitch Harvey on the combination of Harvey, myself and Imei, sort of rotating in and being a part of that board. They meet every two months, did I hear something?
No, I think they, they meet monthly.
Gotcha. So it'd just be nice to be in the circulation of that, you know, see what's going on. Frankly, the guy, I think, the guy said they could use some new blood.
Carl, yeah.
Yeah, he said they could use some new blood. So he liked what he heard here. He said, hey, I like these ideas, we could use some new blood. So maybe some of this is a, is a part of the momentum that maybe we can build. Continue to engage and socialize with other town boards and committees and the residents, right? And prioritize many of those top opportunities we just listed, including the survey. I think the thing is to start with the survey and consider those other things. And we talked to Chris about this, is, you know, you know, Imei and I can continue to plug along here and I think we've made decent progress. But at some point, if it does become serious and interesting and useful, that we need to think, where does a plug in the town government, you know? What town employee manages this transportation plan? You know, if shuttles happen, if Uber relationships happen, if collaboration with other towns happen, it's going to take time. So is it Imei's job? Is it somebody else's job? And is it a board's job, you know? So not that we have any answers, just something to think about maybe in a three to six month timeframe. Is that fair?
Yep.
Yeah. So that, I think, is our presentation for today. It's been fun. Yeah, any, any feedback from...
Yeah, I think we have a live one for you.
Yes.
We've been communicating, I don't know if my husband knows what I'm going to say, but...
I never do.
I know. Okay, we know a group of people, they're environmentally minded people.
Yes.
And they have a church parking lot here with eighty cars and they've been wanting to start a shuttle, but they knew nothing about it. So I'm going to recommend they hook up with Imei.
I'm feeling it.
Right.
Because they need money, they're a church, but...
Tell somebody about this, I forget. Did I write you an email on this?
No, we talked about it a lot at home.
No, 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 I actually communicated this to somebody.
Well, here it is. They want to earn money to pay the utilities of their church. Like, I started talking to them about my cousin's church in Seattle and that's, it was right along I-5, big parking lot and they earn the money. You can park really cheap in the States. You see what I mean?
Yeah, right, now I get it entirely.
They got on a Seattle municipal bus and went into town. These people want to start up their own shuttle. And they want to go to Boston.
They want the transfer station.
And they want to run the shuttle.
They want minimal rent for the spaces and not a big profit, but to help with their heating and cooling.
In that case, they, I'm sorry to jump in the middle, but what, if I remember it correctly, it was a, it was a group that was thinking of starting the shuttle service.
Yeah.
Renting the church parking lot during the week, which is because it's never changed.
Sitting there and...
People aren't very holy during the week.
They've then become the, a sort of a mini transfer station.
And everybody comes there, you have a numbered space, you get a new space and you get on the shuttle.
So I had, I gave this presentation to someone who owns a building in Concord and he thought the same sort of thing. He was saying, I could put a park-and-ride, you know, shuttle system in my parking lot in Concord and take people down one-seventeen to the train station.
Right.
Right.
They said, okay, if it's older people that want to go to the medical area for their medical appointments downtown, that could be it, or it could be people that are employed in Boston, that's their goal.
Right.
And there's like seventy-five to ninety spaces. And when you park in downtown Boston, I'm told, you know, what you could spend for the day, if you go down there to court or deposition.
Thirty-five dollars, at least.
Oh, I bet you could spend eighty or ninety if you go to deposition.
Still people coming in, transferring to the north of Boston. But the, the, what we were finding out, when we looked at the, at the Polaroid development, we've got a bunch of communities together to try to solve the, the traffic avalanche that will occur when that thing's built out. I mean, the towns included Weston, Lincoln, Lexington, Bedford, Waltham. And Burlington, we've talked to Burlington. Anyway, there was this coalition of towns that were trying to work together to, to absorb the, this influx of additional traffic on one-twenty-eight. It stopped because Waltham backed out of it, but that's a long story. Anyway, the problem was that there's a, right now, it's, it's really a network.
It's a network, right.
It's a transportation network, it's no longer like streetcar suburbs that, you know, we have a linear...
No spoken hub anymore.
No more spoken hub, it's all people going from all kinds of places to all kinds of places.
Yeah, right, right.
And the question is, how do you work out the network transportation system so that you don't, you can take the pressure off one-twenty-eight, which is really the only sort of network feeder for all of these towns that cluster around the rim.
I think you have to tick it off one by one, you know? You have to say, maybe the major route is going into Boston, so you alleviate that as much as you can. And then you look at the other, sort of, if that's the larger route, you look at the medium-sized routes and then you pick off the smaller routes over time. I think it's hard to solve the problem all at once.
Well, of course it is, but the, the sort of self-driving cars, that's a good idea because they could be like, uh, the vehicles that would take the place of streetcars and trains, you know?
Yeah.
This sort of network vehicles as opposed to linear vehicles.
My issue with Uber and automated cars is there are going to be more cars if you're not careful. It's happening, it's not shared, yeah, yeah.
They have to be shared.
Uber has added cars and added to congestion. It's reduced parking, big deal, you know? But it's added cars to Boston. And unless you allow it to pool, or you force it to pool.
You force it to pool.
So you can start to regulate to say, you actually have to take an average of two-point-six passengers on every trip. You just have to do that, then you can address it.
I mean, I don't know if they still do it. Twenty years ago, there was a, there was an airport shuttle van that used to drive around and, is that still going? That was great because that, that was a model.
Right, exactly.
I took that thing at least twenty-five times.
Right, exactly.
And it, it would pick up maybe twenty people from all over the place, you know? It'd pick up three or four people from Bentley College and then, you know, I, I would grab it and I'd take a seat and by the time it was filled, it would be maybe twenty-five people in this van, all going to the airport. But the reverse would occur when you'd leave the airport and it would drop people off in different places. And it took a lot longer than if you just, you know, get in your car and drive it yourself because you'd have to...
Right, that, that, I was just going to say, if you're dealing with an affluent community generally who values their time.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is that we'll get you there fast.
Right, that's the, that's the...
The other thing here with people is...
And the shuttles or the Ubers, you can be productive in it.
Yeah.
So you have Wi-Fi service, that kind of thing, so it's not a limo, but, you know, halfway there.
You're not going to be faster than trains though because you still have to deal with all the traffic.
Oh, no.
Eventually, when there are so many shuttles that it actually causes...
No, I, I agree with you that I want to give people a train.
Yeah.
Because I'm saying, your overall trip is faster, you're more productive.
Assuming your destination is on that line.
Right, right, yeah.
You know, you're going into Boston.
Right.
But isn't one of the goals to stop that? You know, this, this...
Well, you have to, frankly...
It's like a black hole, it's just sucking everything in, so everything leaves in the afternoon.
The train is a heck of an asset that's underutilized, that's the thing.
I mean, I, I, what I look at is like a reverse migration into the city. And the kids don't, I mean, young people don't necessarily want to have a big house in the burbs. They are more happy with, well, they're putting up shared apartment spaces, you know, small, common places.
Yes, right, yes, very small.
A lot of kids don't have licenses, so, I mean, they, they all want to be in Boston.
So you walk, and you walk as opposed to having a driver.
And you don't even make your own dinner anymore.
Right, yeah.
Not that you ever did.
They, they sort of all into the dorm, take care of me forever, but that's okay.
Right, it is dorm mode, right.
But you know what I like about this whole thing really is, you have inserted the town of Weston previously, the untouchable, we didn't deal with anybody, town of Weston, pretty much. In sort of a realistic way, I mean, you've gone out there and it's like, you kind of want to dig in and how can we, and can we keep on doing this rather than just doing fly-by and saying, well, there's nothing really here for me, we're going to move on. Just say, you know, we can make changes, tiny percentages. I think what Dave Connelly says the best is, is in the summer, he said the traffic reduction is not fifty percent.
Exactly.
It's something like three or four percent.
Exactly, but it's not...
But that is light and day.
That's a great way of it.
A tiny little reduction is incredible effect. So I like the, the first slides we're talking about were, you know, don't go saying, well, we have to give up if we can't solve the whole problem.
Right, exactly.
We just need to start working and chipping away.
So Al, I think the network issue that you have, I think is what they're working on. I think that's long-term, they're just thinking, it is going to be a network and we've got to figure out how to solve this.
We are much more challenged here because we are laying out in a circular with radios where the city that I came from, Seattle, is orthogonal. And you go so far on a bus or a shuttle and you take what's called a transfer and you get out and you go in that direction. We don't have, you know, that easy cross, cross...
Right, yeah, right.
But I think this is wonderful, really good.
Yeah, a lot of work we've done.
So it's okay with you.
It's nice to see it.
It's okay with you guys, we'll put another couple months into it and then give you a quick update and then we can decide if it's a...
Yeah, I think we've done enough.
If we talk more to the church people, we can recommend them to you.
Why, I think Imei's pretty excited about it.
Yeah, I know, I, I like working on big solutions, stuff like this, you know, for the place.
It's nice to...
Progrmatic improvements, so make...
It's nice to just not always put people fires, but occasionally looking up.
Traffic is an easy conversation to start in Weston, right? That's the question, really, bother by traffic and...
So I mean, there is an answer out there, you know? It's, it's not an insoluble problem.
Yeah, yeah. It's a gnarly one, it's a gnarly one.
Very gnarly.
Yeah, but it, there has to be an answer.
Yeah.
Sometimes the answer is not visible to us. I mean, how many, when, when they were trying to sell the algorithms made with Lyft, Hyde and Uber possible, they couldn't sell it to the cab companies. They couldn't for the life of them get cab companies interested. So there was such an earth-shaking, but that depended on everybody having their own personal eight billion gigabyte computers So there was such a earth shaking, but that depended on everybody having their own personal eight billion gigabyte computer that they had in their pocket.
Right.
So that you could do this, and we don't know what new technology is gonna be there fifteen years from now.
I think Uber, Uber's competition might be really interesting. Where you buy them in, and you say, we want you to average two people per vehicle, and we're gonna subsidize that, and it's gonna be, you know, free to residents for the first X many months, right? We just see what happens, just sell that out there. That's on some of your number program.
All I wanna do is get two people in a car versus one.
And you're all saying you have to have two point six.
Right.
But, and, because people don't, I mean, God, I got stuck in Paris once, my girlfriend made me get one of those stupid shuttles. We went, we were the first people picked up, and then like twenty other people.
Right, right.
Crazy, our car was on fire, we were gonna be late. So I would much prefer that you work on small things, because the distance between your house, Alan, my house, okay, let's do it. You get picked up, and then, and then, so it's only five or ten minutes, not forty-five.
Let's put those, let's put those algorithms to use for us, is what I'm saying.
Right, yeah, right, customize for us.
Have Uber come in and help solve our problem.
That's great, that's great.
That's what we're thinking.
Yeah, go for it.
Right, yeah. And get some money to do it. Right?
Yeah.
It might be a money man, if it's a gold digger.
I don't know if all you guys know it, if you don't live on Route 20 like we do, the queue from 128 to the cemetery is solid.
There's a queue that's solid everywhere.
Yeah, and they're sitting in the cars, and they're working on their computers and on their cell phones.
But that makes it even slower, because you know someone's texting away, and it's suddenly a hundred feet, and then it's...
That's why.
And nobody, the people that's over...
Exactly.
They're setting the Wi-Fi right out of the air, those guys sitting in...
Oh, I worked more with them now.
Yeah, in the houses, you can't get the Wi-Fi because of the line of cars. Every guy in the room...
Thanks for your attention, guys.
Thank you, that was great.
Yeah.
Okay. The only question I have is, or maybe it's not a question, just an observation, that EMI is the only guy I know that has a twenty-five hour day. I don't see how you do it all. I sleep here. So my commute TV, I'm just a little like, up the hole there.
Okay, all right, I did the minutes, nine twenty-six, of course, I left them at home. I had very few things to say, mostly about, the biggest thing was start time, end time.
Okay.
That has to be added again.
Okay.
And so when we, in journalists, we are gonna say...
I'll, I'll observe the time.
Right, and then you're gonna say now to somebody who wants to improve the minutes for me.
Well, do I have a motion for approving the nine twenty-six meeting?
So moved.
On favor.
Aye.
Keep that already.
That Mr. Sam Plan reported to adjourn.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll go through this quick. I do wanna bring a couple, a couple of events. Metro Common, they're doing the listening sessions, the ones I went over last time, where they, you know, they had lots of like write love letters to your town. Next one's gonna be in Norwood, which is fairly close, so, and then they're gonna have one on the twenty-eighth, the location to be determined, but that one's gonna be much nearer, it's gonna be in the Metro West area. February twelfth, we have a site visit for River School. The eight fifteen start time, that's from Dave's suggestion, that that comes after all the drop-offs, so we'll run that one a little later. We went over traffic planning already, which is great. Watermaster Plan is moving, I've gotten all the data to M A P C, and we're reviewing the, the technical assistance contract. Why did that just breeze on me? It's because it wants me to say nothing more about this.
Yes, so you have a spinning ball of death.
That's a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, that's what that means.
Ball of, you're out of time.
So, and the last thing is, Leslie had some things about the town center master plan, that she wanted me to come and, well, she wanted me to distribute after she had gone through the bid documents.
We've already gone out to bid, though.
They've already gone out to bid, so I think this is stuff to check, like, after, outside town center, town center master plan documents.
It's considerably shorter than the other.
Yeah.
They are now, apparently.
They are?
Somebody told me, because this came up at a meeting, I forget which one, you know, whether these pullbacks of boxes are gonna be, are gonna turn into pedestals, and the answer was absolutely not, they're just gonna stay pole boxes. They're just rectangles in the sidewalk.
Like, they're in a screw, and it's like a metal link.
Right.
Okay, all right, so it's not, it's not, it's not a pedestal.
At least, I was told they're not gonna turn into pedestals.
So we can cross that off, which is, pull boxes will have pedestals.
At least that's what they say.
Harvey's giving me a notice, and now we have too many bike rides.
Okay, so since the documents have already gone out to bid, we just, I, I think the message is that bids come in and the, and the contractors sign, we just need to check these, some of these boxes and make sure that, that some of the stuff is addressed.
Well, why not just send this to Steve Lo, to Ford, to Mitch, and let them answer each question, each five bullets?
It's fine with me.
I think that's what's most directly to do.
Yeah, okay.
And it also is nice and positive, if these things have been addressed, and these are the things, but she does say, it's a brief look, it's not index.
It's a half a page long as opposed to five or six, so...
Right, yeah, it's a big plus, and she, credit where credit is taken, so that's good.
Okay, okay, so, yeah, should that just keep a row?
Okay.
Steve Lo doesn't think that he has to deal with all this.
Okay.
Mitch should really...
And the last thing I just wanna say for public listening is, Boston Properties, we're trying to schedule neighborhood meetings for the week of February eleventh, so hoping to be moving on that project and have Debbie Forrest on the twenty-seventh.
Well, we're gonna have neighborhood meetings.
Yeah.
Starting...
The eleventh, the eleventh is when I'm gonna get those lined up.
Terry connected you.
Yes, I talked to Terry.
So what's, Boston Properties is coming back, is this our indication to them, or are they coming back over to Seattle?
They now have a proposal that checks all the boxes that were concerns for the neighbors a year ago. The one remaining question is whether the proposed office building addition will have a significant impact from use cases off-site. And, and, as a matter of fact, UCL has been doing studies showing what the impacts are gonna be. We're, we're doing winter, studies in the winters, night, night studies, that sort of thing. We're gonna run those by the neighborhood groups and the meetings to get their response to, to, to those impacts or the significance of them. But right now, it looks like the impacts are gonna be fairly small from the office building, depending to a large extent on what the materials will be and that kind of thing. So there'll be some discussion around how much penetration is gonna be, looking outward.
So this, this, my, my question is like, I don't know any, because I don't know...
Yeah, I wanna talk about the boxes that were checked off, especially if she's...
I'm just wondering, like, the last, I heard with Boston Properties, it's like, the town will come begging to us, end of the story. And they walked away waiting for the town, and now suddenly, I mean, over the months, things have happened, they've made approaches, something a little history.
The deal is that where we left off last year, they were proposing two seventy, two hundred and seventy-five units.
I know about what they're proposing.
You do? Jones Road access, and, and, and the size of the office building, you know, that's not...
And that it was absolutely new, and could not take anything off the size of the office building, that they had to have this, and that, that. I mean, that was, the last meeting that I remember was, they walked saying, no, we listened, you went to, you guys went out.
Current proposal.
Right.
One hundred to one hundred and twenty units of senior housing. They've, they've cut it a bit, more than half.
More than half, right, yeah. Access?
Access, no longer, because it's, it's being reduced so significantly, it is no longer necessary to come over Jones Road. They can now come off the Post Road, although they wanna keep the Jones Road access possibility open in case for some reason, something goes wrong with the one hundred and twenty access. But that's the one that they, they're committed to.
So they were so adamant about the Route 20 access.
Well, they're not anymore.
The advisor's always adamant.
This is so interesting, because I'm completely out of...
This is about negotiating with developers.
Right.
So, you know, of course, they, they're gonna say, we're at a hollow line, and then the next thing you know, they're not. So they, they backed off on the size of, anyway, now, because the, the size of the, of the senior housing component has reduced, is to the extent that it has, the senior housing developers, like Benchmark, are interested. They weren't interested before, because there were too many units on the table.
And odd interests.
And the Jones Road, it was, they weren't, they weren't interested in.
And so the staffing, the staffing module for something like that is around one hundred and twenty occupants. To staff it with the activities, the nursing, and all the people that...
This is more than just over fifty-five housing, this is nursing.
Senior, no.
Then, why would you have staffing like that?
Because those are part of the benefits in something like that.
So it's, it's still sort of an over fifty, is it an eight? I mean, would it be independent living?
Independent, independent.
But they do have a nursing staff?
Yeah.
No, I don't like good talking.
No, no, no.
It's part of their, it's part of their footprint.
Yeah, but anyway, that's all, sure, I don't, yeah, we don't, but the fact is, they're coming back, and when did this come on? I mean, when did they approach, where did they approach the first time?
Well, this has been a process, this has been a sort of an ongoing process.
So it's been with the board's selectmen, with you.
With Harvey Bossar, with Tony, EMI, and myself.
Okay, what about the other project further down, or is that the one?
That's, 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 that one is gonna start gearing up fairly shortly, because apparently Mark Romanowicz, the developer, has now, I think, is the word, that he's, that he's completed the P and S, or he's almost done?
He's almost, as, as I'm saying, he's almost completed the P and S.
So, so what's that happening, does the, then, then the floodgates will open. And he, he's apparently working right now in conceptual sort of design, because he wasn't looking at blobs before, and now he's actually drilling down a little further, reportedly, on what the, what the components will actually look like. So we're about to gear up.
That's still in process, moving away on that. Okay, so they're gonna go con con effectively, for things maybe happening. And the last question is, how can we be assured that the state, I guess it can never be assured, I mean, I, I came on board, remember when Susan Haber was still here, and senior housing, oh, it was just not counted. It was just not counted towards your forty B.
The best information we have, Sue, is that, that it's, it's okay, we can, we can do this.
Unless between there and there, D A C changes their rules. Currently, they will count it.
Okay, so that's it, you just go by, let's get me right, and hope they don't decide after all the build, oh, they don't count.
They do, I mean, I don't know what we do about that, but then we'll have to just deal with it.
Well, this is exciting, this is...
I hate to be Debbie Downer, but the big impediment with both of these projects, especially seven fifty-one and seven sixty-one, ties back to EMI's and Tony's abus of patience, and all the traffic it's gonna generate on Route 20, and unless they can somehow, especially seven fifty-one, seven sixty-one, since it's further west and all that, traffic has to get to 128, unless they can figure out a way to mitigate that traffic, I don't know how they do it, unless they come up with shuttles.
But he's reducing the number, too.
That's what we're, as much as we're not saying it's not gonna have any impact. But the other one in Boston Post Road, remember that senior?
Right, so they will be using...
Right, and they're also much closer to 128, so I think that's less of an issue, but seven fifty-one, seven sixty-one...
By trail.
They're on it, they...
We're talking to him about the, about the shared office facility on-site, we're talking about the bike trail.
The shuttle.
Access to the, to the train stations, you know, we're talking about that stuff, and he's reduced the size of it. The issue may be now that we, we're gonna, we don't know whether it's gonna be a hundred to a, or a hundred and twenty units at, at Boston Properties, and we're not sure how many units Mark Romanowicz is gonna finally wind up at, I think it's gonna be around a hundred and twenty.
So we may not have a P and S harbor.
It may not quite be at safe harbor, I mean, maybe twenty to thirty units short of safe harbor.
However, we still will have the good intention, gold star in our forehead.
We'll have safe harbor for a few years, yeah, so we need to find a, a place for another...
Two years from the, the last of those two projects, isn't it?
Right.
I have a question.
So, I mean, three years. All right, so...
That's moving, can we, just push on.
How would you know that?
That's how the men's was working.
Can we move to adjourn while one of us is out of room?
Sure, you can, you're a core American.
Move to adjourn at ten thirty-one P M.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Bye. We're done.
Great.
All right, thank you, everyone.